I'm a survivor forever. I will never stop until God take me up off this. I'm always move forward. I will always be here. If somebody take me off this planet, I'm always move forward. I ain't no quit. Can't nobody stop.
Jerks. What up jerks? Can you hear me? Can you see me? Going doc tonight. No video. We're gonna play um a good clip of Canton Select Board Public Comment. Kind of review where where we started, where we're going, what we've been doing. Remind ourselves what matters. And hopefully move on. Today, this week, this weekend, the last couple of months. Kind of sucked for free Karen Reed. I want to hear from you tonight. I'm gonna I'm gonna throw the StreamYard link in. But we're not gonna take calls until the Canton Select Board video is over. It's probably about almost an hour, maybe a little less than an hour. We're gonna watch that. And then we'll take your calls. Suck sometimes when you're right, but you're not even happy about it. So many things this last couple of weeks. You'd think I'd be happy to be right. I was right when I said about the dick riders. I was. And dude basically said it today. Dude basically said what I said. How many weeks ago on his show when when all of you? I was the only one that actually tried to be a friend of the YouTubers. I actually put my reputation, I put my channel. I put my livelihood on the line. My family got harassed, I got harassed, people got channels against us. Same with JFK. Truth hurts. Truth hurts. And I could play all the clips. I could I could revel in this, but that's not what I'm doing. I just want to hear from you tonight. And I want to go back to that time when we were all united. And it was about helping Canton, helping Norfolk County. It's about people showing up. Everyone's contribution mattered. There wasn't one person taking credit for everything. It was it was a community effort at one point. I've never wanted to be the leader. I don't think I'm that important. But I also know reality. I also know the relationships I have. I know the experience that I have in journalism, in activism. And the relationships. There's a reason why my show gets the guests. And there's a wisdom that comes from that experience. And I saw this coming. I saw it coming. And some of you YouTubers. You better be damn careful because you're gonna end up witnesses. And what are you gonna do when you're in that spot? Where you have to choose between being a witness against? Or lying? What are you gonna do in that point? And to the dick riders. You created this. You'll be up there tonight bad mouthing all all the people that told the truth, all the receipts that have been posted. First, they denied it. Then they said it was AI. No question about it. Karen Reed was wiretapped and we know who did it. And they should have just owned up to it. And all you idiots out there are doing is walking him into the fucking jail cell. And that's not what I actually want. I want accountability. Lost the video I wanted to play. Hold on one second. God damn. I got a chicken pot pie upstairs ready to eat. I'm gonna put this on. How many minutes is it gonna be? Let's let's just see how many minutes we got on this. It's about 50 minutes. Hold on one minute. I got the video.
We are again asking this board for leadership. We might as well talk to the wall. One member's been on this board for 35 years, yet with all his experience-
Right, one moment. Now, this video is probably one of a new series we're gonna do. We're gonna start mining all the Canton Select Board hearings that we streamed, all the public comments and go through and start making little compilations like this, like we are tonight. As well as the police audit meetings and all of the stuff that we have from Canton. Instead of going back to Canton, tonight, we're going back to Canton. And what you're gonna see tonight. Brenda Sweeney. Good to see a lot of Brenda Sweeney. Good to see a lot of Rita Lombardi. Good to see a lot of Chris Albert. Lot of Chris Albert. Also good to see uh Jennifer O'Donnell. And some other Canton residents. Got about 50 minutes of this. We're gonna play this and now I'm gonna take your calls. See, this is one I'm gonna talk about right here. Steve, all this talk about the wiretapping, but what about it's what about? What about? Does Meredith have 300,000 people following her? That's number one. Number two is uh this dude shared it with her. Have you been paying attention? He shared all this shit with her. He shared it with her. He put some of it on her computer. Are you paying attention? And this is how stupid this is. Because once this goes public. Which it has. And it's because of people like you, Steve, that said, go Aiden, go Aiden, be crazy, be crazy, Aiden, play with fire. Go after everyone that supported you, all the money that was raised. Steve, you're a dummy. Wake the fuck up. Stop putting your friend in jail. That's what you're doing. Ask them for accountability. Exactly. None of the and none of the riders do either. Now, I'm not saying none of you do because some of you do. Some of you are waking up and I love that. But I'm talking about the intense ones, the ones who they can't and Aiden never does anything wrong. Yeah, I like this. The best thing. I love this, that they made me into a muppet. In my wrestling uniform with my headgear. I gotta find the headgear. I need the headgear. Gotta find it. I gotta dig it out of the closet somewhere. Alright, let's play the video. Like I said, it's gonna be about 50 minutes. I'm gonna I'm gonna throw it in the chat right now, the StreamYard link. We'll pin it up in the chat. But we're not gonna take any calls until this is over. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the ones who are here tonight, too. And it's funny because I have so much content that I'm been holding off on. Some of the guests that want to come back on the show or new guests. I just I I just, this shit has engulfed us all. Alright, let's play the video.
...in leadership, he hasn't offered one solution. Either he hasn't learned much in 35 years, or he's learned the wrong things. Maybe this is better for him. He enjoys the perks more than the service. Then there's the member who works with Rafferty to weaponize the law. Those two are making a mockery of our officers with integrity, the ones we respect, who want to uphold the law. And yet this abuse is permitted. Why? Where did the leaders with a backbone and a moral compass go? Why are there no leaders willing to stand up and say, stop, enough is enough? Have you all left town or gone over to the dark side? Because it's pretty obvious, the people in the shadows pulling the strings only care about two things. Control and money. And any leader that that chooses silence effectively hands it to them on a silver platter. A lot goes on in the shadows here, like that funeral home contractor, real estate trifecta, that's just one of the rackets. It makes us wonder what's up their sleeve for the upcoming election. Will they fill the ballot with extra candidates just to hinder the chances of any qualified opponent the incumbent might face? Those shadow dwellers busy pulling strings and lining their pockets definitely don't want change. It's simple when leaders that could make a difference choose silence, combined with a police chief willing to weaponize the law at the expense of our decent officers. For a police chief who willingly submitted an inverted video at a murder trial, this is a cakewalk. One of our senior citizens fell on the ice, breaking his hip in multiple places. He crawled back into his house and suffered in agony until a friend could take him to a hospital. Why? Why would he do that? He refused to call 911 out of fear. Do you hear that, people? Fear of what that phone call would bring to his door, that he would be in more danger from calling 911 in Canton. He's not the only one. How very sad is that? That's what this town's been reduced to under their current leadership. That includes our public facing leaders, those lurking in the shadows, pulling strings, and the silent minority sitting back and watching instead of acting. I guess greed and power are stronger driver driving forces than moral fortitude. They'd rather enjoy the fruits of their labor than continue than contribute to anyone else's welfare. It's time to call a spade a spade. What we have are leaders driven by greed and power. The real truth is simple. They want your money, honey, and you're basically collateral damage to them. Zero moral fortitude, leading us straight to hell in a handbasket. It's actually tragic for this town. And thanks to Zoom, the whole world is watching our demise. And it's one for the history books, that's for sure. By the way, another reminder, it's time to start the search for a new chief. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Sweeney.
11:00 PM at the Salah Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton. Time being seven o'clock. This meeting will be recorded by cable community television and be able to be viewed at a later date. Does the board have any announcements at this moment? Nope, seeing none. I will read the statement before public comment. Public comment of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns. However, it is not meant to be a question and answer format. There'll be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. Those that wish to speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name, in town you live in, your address is not required. I would ask all members of the audience to be respectful of each speaker as well as each other. Anyone that does not wish to speak or is unable to do so due to time limit may submit their concerns in writing for the board's review and consideration. That being said, we will start public comment.
Is that on?
Yep.
Okay. Brenda Sweeney, Canton, in my opinion. They're inches away from my door. I really need your help as a citizen of Canton. His desperate cry for help, and yet the body camera footage of that event paints the true picture. Eric and Richie leisurely talking to each other in front of CF McCarthy's several yards, yards up the street. Standing peacefully, holding signs that said, I love Canton and Chris Albert resign. That was hardly the scenario you were trying to convey with your desperate cry for help as a citizen of Canton, wasn't it, Mr. Albert? In Aesop's Fables, the boy who cried wolf didn't have a name. We know our town crier's name and he sits right up there on that board. Witnesses swear to tell the truth. The goal of witness intimidation is to force someone to lie about something they're testifying to. It protects the criminal. It's a blatant attempt to obstruct justice. In repeated calls to the police for help claiming witness intimidation, Mr. Albert maintains he's scared for his safety because of the protesters in Canton. Yet, in reality, it's the protesters who've been on the receiving end of hostile aggression in this town. We have, we use our signs, our voice and our vote to make our point. I assure you, Mr. Albert, the protesters want every witness to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, including you. The truth, plain and simple, and the justice that follows. If you're calling the police to save you from witness intimidation, you couldn't be more wrong. Or maybe it's something else. Maybe you're scared of the truth. If that's the case, the FBI is your problem, not us, and you should start looking for a country with no extradition policy instead of the Canton Police to save your tush. We know you and your cronies want us to shut up and go home. The latest attempt to blatantly weaponize the police is a Rafferty error tactic. Thankfully, Chief Perkins is here to truly be the chief of police. We also want Mr. Albert to resign from this board. Just listening to that police call in conjunction with the body camera footage proves what a farce that call was. Everyone sees right through the illusion you're trying to perpetrate as the scared victim. Fat genie's not going back in the bottle either. Stop crying wolf. God forbid a real emergency response gets delayed because they're busy responding to nonsense. Karen Reed didn't kill Officer John O'Keefe. So who did, my friends? Who really did? That's why we're protesting. And just like Helena, you can't have your cake and eat it too, Mr. Albert. So I ask you. What are you really scared of? Is it the truth you're actually scared of? Because that's all we want is the truth. Yet, asking for it seems to send you into a tizzy. I wonder why that is. We'll be back looking for the truth once again. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
No, just a quick response to that. Just once again, disinformation through you, Mr. Chair. Those gentlemen were directly in front of my store harassing me. I have it on videotape. They walked away when the policeman, I'm not gonna sit here and listen to slanders and lies.
We all saw the videotape.
You'll see the truth. Don't worry.
Okay. No more public comments. Okay, let's go back, go on to the agenda, please.
All right, first up for tonight on our agenda, Poxon Recreation, the real business of the town of Canton, Poxon Recreation Department update. Tyler.
Thanks for being a long time listener. Uh, next we have Brenda Sweeney. Ms. Sweeney, give us just a second to unmute her. Uh, you there, Ms. Sweeney?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep, perfect.
2018 body on the road, 2018 drowned, 2018 car accident, 2019 suicide, 2020 suicide. 2021 Sandra Burchmore, suicide until it wasn't. 2022 Officer John O'Keefe, motor vehicle homicide until it wasn't. 2023 drowned, 2023 overdose. Nine unattended deaths since 2018 in Canton alone. For the record, my car is in excellent mechanical condition and I am not suicidal, just in case someone prefers even numbers. Thirty-four of you wrote, Canton PD was on the scene first in search for evidence. State police came later and claimed they found more evidence. Who stood up and said, no, we were there, that stuff wasn't there in the morning? No one. Instead, you let the state police waltz in, tap dance all over your integrity, and when they took a bow and exited stage left, you said nothing. You did nothing. You did not show us one ounce of integrity. Instead, you started clapping to the beat of their drum, helping them craft the narrative. And you're not free from sin, Select Board Chairman, Police Commissioner Lockren. We saw the video. She ran from the Sallyport instead of stopping the crime in progress. Now we have another officer who thinks it's okay to get drunk while carrying his badge and gun. Proceeds to lose both in that drunken haze and the only thing this town does is dock him three eight-hour shifts? My God, what a joke doesn't come close to covering that one. What a total and utter disgrace. This Select Board, uh, the police commissioners of this town and you're okay with that? This board's not gonna stand up and say, no, that's not okay? Seriously? We've already had one drunken incident in town that cost us $300,000. How many more drunken incidents out there that we don't know about? We know how leadership works in this town. Don't ask, don't tell, do it in executive session. You had a chance to set an example, Helena. Instead, what you effectively said to this town is, our force is a band of merry men that can do whatever they want with reckless abandon. We know there's good cops on our force that want to uphold their oath. The sad fact is you're dragging them down into the gutter with you. They deserve better than that from their chief and from their select board. You wanted to give her one more year to see how she'd perform, Mike? I guess we have your answer. Fix the messes my officers make with a minor slap on the wrist for appearances sake. And how safe is this town when the select board is too scared to show up in town and face the citizens? Change happens one decision at a time. Every decision causes downstream ripples. You had the opportunity to make a change, Mike. Instead, you used your power to give Rafferty another year, creating new ripples. One day, those ripples will crash into someone else's. That crash causes new ripples that choose their own path and control is gone. When unrestrained ripples flow in all directions, the innocent become collateral damage. You own every single ripple of destruction that comes out of that station, Mike. I hope it was worth what you got out of that deal, whatever the heck it was. Receiver ship would we wicked pisser, Josh, before there's more blood on the streets of Canton? I remember your words. No fear, no favor. Can't wait till they show up.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, the next statement is a statement on Detective Kevin Albert. So the Select Board uh would like to inform uh the public that a resolution has been reached in the Canton Police Personnel matter. The Canton Police Department hired an independent investigator who conducted a thorough investigation of the allegations of misconduct by Detective Albert. Following the investigation, the Select Board reviewed the report and had an opportunity to question the investigator and Detective Albert about the scope and sufficiency of the investigation, as well as the substance of the allegations. The Select Board voted that the discipline be imposed by the chief of police, which Detective Albert has accepted. Select Board Member Chris Albert recused himself from the hearing. All right. Next, uh, we are going to go into public comment. So as I do uh each meeting before public comments, I read this statement. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns. But the public comment portion of the meeting is not meant to be a question and answer format. Uh, Ms. Sweeney. Give me another try.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, Brenda Sweeney, Canton. My humble opinions. Let's talk about the joke in Canton called leadership, AKA Police Chief Rafferty and Select Board Chair Mike Lockren. Rafferty, only available through email or one-on-one meetings. No open forum for questions. What a joke. Leadership to her is, I believe in wellness. We need a new kitchen and a fence. Only $240,000. Not money for body cameras, upgraded software and video, training for officers. What a joke. Walpo's chief defends free speech. Canton's chief issues warrants. What a joke. No necklace, but it's a belt, it's a strap, it's a rope, it's a scarf. It's Canton. What a joke. No probable cause, no ring camera, no crime scene tape, no crime scene guard, no evidence tape, no forage, no free speech, no rubber ducks. No problem. It's Canton. What a joke. She says, quote, 360 degrees of transparency is critical to our profession, yet there's 42 minutes of missing video. What a joke. Who's the policeman on the video running out of the Sallyport faster than a speeding bullet? What a joke. As the whole world witnessed, Rafferty's lack of integrity explains a lot. We now know the jury can't believe the Canton Police Department is so incompetent, it missed 45 pieces of taillight. Where's your statement, Helena? What a joke. Lockren, it's his way or the highway. We ask for accountability, quote. I don't tell the police how to do their job. Police oversight is your job, Mike. What a joke. We asked about Rafferty's accident, quote, we don't normally announce these things. Then we promised to do better. First blame us, then an empty promise. What a joke. When challenged, he put you in a Zoom closet. What a joke. He renewed Rafferty's contract, yet refused public comment because they already had email feedback. I FOIA'd the emails. They said $300 for that. So I changed to just the number of yes versus no, because you know, they would have tallied those responses, right? What a joke. The exact response, the emails received by the Select Board were not tallied to determine the number of yes or no opinions concerning the chief's contract renewal. I am told there were emails opposed to the contract renewal, as well as many emails in favor. What a joke. Mike did exactly what he wanted regardless. Stellar leadership there. What a joke. He wants us to believe he didn't add up those responses. Do you really think that would have been the answer if there were more yes than no responses? What a joke. Canton, a dictator and his enforcer. No democracy in this town. Between these two, there's a total lack of trust and transparency, a complete failure of leadership. What a joke. What a legacy you two are leaving. What does the world say about Canton these days? They literally say, what a joke. Tracy and Dana's YouTube channel is called Resistance to Silence, a fitting name for yet another strong voice that's emerged from the crusade Aiden started to find justice for JJ and Karen. They stood with us in November and have organized a protest this Saturday from 12 to 3 at the Canton Police Department. Hope to see you there. You too, Mike. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sweeney.
We can have a conversation outside, okay, and ask each other. Simple as that. If you wanna talk to somebody else in the back room, hope you go outside and have a conversation outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer. All right, before we get on to the next agenda item, uh, we have two statements uh to read. So um, Mr. Albert, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll go first. Okay, as many of you know, um, I've had two recent verbal altercations with members of the public outside of my role as a Select Board. Despite the tremendous harassment, stress and anxiety that my family, extended family, and I have been subjected to over the past 16 months. My interactions were inappropriate and as an elected official, I am held to a higher standard. And I understand that the residents of Canton expect public officials to always conduct themselves professionally and focus on the business of the town. I apologize for my recent reaction and will refrain from any further public incidents that I'm becoming as a member of this Canton Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Uh, in additional statement, uh, Chief Rafferty has placed Kevin Albert on paid administrative leave while an outside and, please be quiet. While an outside independent investigation is being conducted relative to his actions in a case he investigated with Michael Proctor approximately two years ago. Kevin Albert was placed on leave on June 13th and will remain on leave until the results of the investigation are provided by the outside independent investigator. All right. It's not a vote.
It's not a vote.
No. We're just gonna try.
Okay, and if I could just say something on the public comments, as long as you're talking about public comments, before public comments start. Um, you know, this town, there's a lot going on in this town and I appreciate that you surveyed other towns, but we are in a different situation. And you know, we have been asking for more than 15 minutes. And what that does is it puts tremendous pressure on the whole community when everybody only has 15 minutes to speak and other people want to speak. So I'm asking you, if you're gonna put it wherever you put it, to extend the public comments. I would like to commend Bob McCarthy for doing something at the recent police audit meeting. And he at least went to 20 minutes and allowed people to speak freely. I'm asking you to take the chains off us. Don't put that silly timer on and let's talk and let people talk as people, the way they normally would talk without having to read. So I'm asking you to reach into your heart and have a little compassion for the community and give us at least 25 minutes for public comments and don't time us. And let us speak. When Bob McCarthy did that, we were able to collaborate and work together. When our hands are tied and we have a silly timer on, it causes unnecessary stress to the community. So that's all I would like to say.
Because um, Ms. Lombardi, um, were you asked to not have the timer um attached to this? I certainly understand the pressure uh that that can put on a speaker. As we've mentioned before, we have many money, many other avenues for residents to reach out to us. We have the open office hours uh that are unlimited. People can talk. The the problem is if the public comment is civil and um you know, non-screaming, but if there are members of the audience that are just screaming at, you know, members of the Select Board over and over, there has to be a limit to that. We can't just allow that for 20 minutes.
Right, and I would like to say that that time limit and the fact that we don't really think you're listening to us because some of you's take off your mic and then you, it's like, okay, three minutes, Rob, ding, next person. That contributes to the anxiety that's in this room. So if you can help us lower the anxiety, we can help by not responding accordingly.
All right, so uh, let's let's see how, let's see how it goes tonight. All right, so hold on.
I thought we were gonna figure out, I think now based on the fact that it's gonna be longer, maybe it is at the end of the meeting and we do the 20 minutes.
So yeah.
Twenty-five. Well, Rita wants a twenty-five. I mean, I don't care, like twenty, twenty-five at this point, we're here all night.
Look, let's, let's attempt a twenty-minute.
All right, okay.
All right, so did you have a comment uh about what we've already discussed, or are you about to go into public comment?
But I just have one question before. Do you guys have anything planned on the agenda about talking about the reappointment of the police chief um within the next month or so? Her contract is up on June thirtieth. Is that something that you guys are gonna discuss in an executive session? Or will the community have some um chance to voice their concerns um on the reappointment of um Chief Rafferty?
So typically that is done, uh, contract negotiations are done um in executive session. And then when a contract is finalized, it's done so in a public meeting. Um, if the public has input, they could certainly email the select board um with that input. But um, it, it would not be something that we would open uh to the public for contract negotiations.
Not contract negotiations uh about um concerns or something on an agenda item um on her reappointment. There would no, be no input from the community.
So the select board hasn't decided, uh, we, we haven't yet um engaged in those conversations. We were waiting to get through town meeting. Um, so I, I suspect that the select board will start to have those conversations.
So those conversations will happen in an executive session, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
So there'll be, even if I made an um motion for an um, an agenda item, it would not be allowed?
Correct, contract negotiations are done in executive session.
That's a loophole to kind of cover like salary negotiations, not public safety negotiations where we don't feel our current chief is in our best interest. That's completely different than what you're covering under your loopholes. So let's make sure that we're not trying to like pull the fleece over everyone's eyes.
Okay.
But you can certainly comment about how you feel.
Yeah, that should be a public comment and a public agenda item before you go into private negotiations for a raise and a new car and what her vacation time would potentially be. Two different things.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say one more thing on that topic, okay? I don't think you guys need the community to tell you what we all see. Anyone watching this trial can see the performance of the police department, can see the performance of the high-ranking police officers who have deviated from policies and procedures. And I'm just gonna say this.
And Ms., Ms. Lombardi, we can't comment on the case.
I'm not asking you to comment on the case. Uh, what I'm saying is, people can send emails to you to express their concern about the leadership that our police department has had. And unfortunately for our town, the whole world can see the performance of our police department. So I'm hoping that you can take what everyone else can see and ma, and for, include that in your decision-making. If the board comes back and re, you know, renegotiates the contract and continues with the chief, then you will see probably public outcry based on the performance that has been under oath on, in testimony. So it's not my opinion or anybody else's opinion. It's anyone listening to the trial is witnessing that. So I just hope, and we all hope, that you guys take into consideration what everyone else is seeing. And that's what we're asking.
Okay.
Uh, Brenda Sweeney, um.
So, oh, hold on a second because.
We gotta get on track here.
We haven't officially started our public comment, even though we've started our public comment.
It's about the police chief. You have to give her thirty days' notice if you're not gonna renew her contract, and that's two days away. So you're telling us you haven't made the decision yet? Uh, Brenda Sweeney, um.
So, oh, hold on a second because.
We gotta get on track here.
We haven't officially started our public comment, even though we've started our public comment.
It's about the police chief. You have to give her thirty days' notice if you're not gonna renew her contract, and that's two days away. So you're telling us you haven't made the decision yet?
Yeah. By contrast, you have to give her thirty days.
Otherwise, you give her a gold. So if you're gonna give her a gold comparison, we're gonna close it off.
Okay.
Your, your audience is educated. Treat us as such.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. All right.
Okay, Mike, is public comment now?
Here we go.
With that being said, I, I'd like to take um a few minutes just to um convey my thoughts and a lot of the thoughts of this community that um a lot of people are sitting at home wa, watching this on TV and they don't show up to the select board meetings for fair of speaking out against the police department. And um, I would just like to state that um Helena Rafferty was the acting chief on January twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-two. She never showed up on the scene at Thirty-four Fairview or at the Canton Police Department that day, and I ask why. Lieutenant Kelleher oversaw the detective unit of the Canton Police Department. He also lives across the street from Thirty-four Fairview. He never showed up on the scene or even came out of his house. Can you imagine this? Officer Lank and Chief Berkowitz were not even scheduled to work that day, but yet they inserted themselves into this investigation. By the way, Chief Berkowitz was on medical leave on January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. So who was calling the shots that day? A Boston police officer was dead on the lawn of another Boston police officer's house. And we learned from testimony that one of the officers stated that there was no probable cause to search Thirty-four Fairview. There was a missing shoe, a missing hat, no jacket on the victim. If that was any one of our homes, the circumstances would have been different. Through testimony, we've learned that there is a malignancy in our police department. There is a lack of professionalism, a lack of following proper policies and procedures, a lack of judgment, a lack of taking clear and concise police reports, a lack of the importance of interviewing and separating witnesses, and a very obvious lack of memory in preserving a crime scene, a lack of evidence collection. When going off topic about flock cameras at the August eighth, twenty-twenty-three select board meeting, Helena Rafferty made statements that will be preserved forever, as she stated in quote, "I will always be able to look at the O'Keefe family and tell them there is no evidence of a cover-up." This is not faring well in week five of this trial. Helena Rafferty inherited a very flawed and humiliating set of circumstances. But the chief has had ample opportunity to express to this community that she was doing everything in her role as a leader to be transparent, to assure the residents of Canton that this tragedy was being processed with the proficiency it deserved. This is what leaders do. The chief has never once made a public statement to this community. The chief never addressed the public outcry over shoddy police work. She agreed to meet one-on-one with residents. We asked the select board to have you arrange a public meeting with her to hear our concerns, and you declined. The select board also failed to hold her accountable. We asked the town to hire a crisis manager. Nothing was done. This is not leadership. I asked this select board, while meeting in executive session over the next few weeks, over the contract of offering current Police Chief Helena Rafferty a new three-year contract. Ask yourself, does she possess the skills, the leadership, the fortitude to deal with the consequences of the, of this investigation? Like the old saying goes, don't throw the baby out because the bathware, the bathwater is dirty. The bathwater is dirty and the current chief is the baby. It's time for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell?
Jennifer O'Donnell. Parody of public figures ruled constitutional. In nineteen eighty-eight, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled parody of public figures constitutional. In Hustler Magazine versus Falwell, and the U.S. Supreme Court applies the actual malice standards, saying the First Amendment protects the right to parody public figures, even if the parodies are outrageous or inflict severe emotional distress. Last November, a man in our community made gun gestures with his hands at me in a crowded auditorium, just feet from our Chief of Police, and rose away from our select board. I have a history with this individual, and his actions broke federal law. I asked for the video and have still, to this day, not been allowed to view it or have a copy. The chief's words, I watched it. It was a joke amongst friends. I did not ask her for what her perception was. I know how I felt shaking a room full of cops with not an action taken, even after I made the whole room aware of the moment. I was told you need three situations, and then you go to Stoughton District Court to get yourself a restraining order. Then you call nine-one-one. Now our cops can do their job. It has come to my attention, an individual has also, to all accounts, been joking around with Chris Albert, who is by all accounts, much to my disdain, a public official. This individual has served, has been served not one, but two warrants to search his motor vehicle for the same information only a week apart. So either they didn't get what they needed the first time, once again inept at their jobs, or this is harassment of a citizen, a fishing expedition at the call of Chris Albert. Neither warrant this reaction. You're looking at littering and distribution of propaganda. Both are mere fines. This was done at a citizen's business in front of their clients. Chris Albert is once again weaponizing the Canton Police Department for his own gain and to terrorize citizens who stand against him. Chris Albert, the proper procedure is three events. Then you go to Stoughton District Court. Hope that you get a restraining order. Call nine-one-one. Why are the rules so wildly different for you? Are you going after this individual for witness intimidation? Will I be next? Public service announcement and notice to all of our police in our town. After the attitude I received from Officer Healy the other morning when he ticketed me, I no longer feel safe being pulled over one-on-one in the town of Canton. Please let it be known that I will meet you outside of the police station. I will not risk being pulled over again by one of the good old boys. Officer Healy, your message was received. After speaking to multiple cops from surrounding towns and multiple mu, mass state police officers, they all agreed you were indeed just being a dick.
Well, gentlemen.
Yes. Thank you for your bravery. Um, listen, Rita Lombardi, I live in Canton, obviously, and, you know, I came here tonight, I was gonna speak about the chief, and that was already spoken about. And when you, Mr. Lockren, opened up with the, what you opened up with, um, and you said that the police, you know, we will not tolerate police being targeted. That's like, you know, the police are not being targeted. And that you, that statement was included. Everything you said is pretty much standard language. But when you add that the police, no one will, we're not gonna tolerate police being targeted, there's no incident of police being targeted. And when a statement like that is made, it causes confusion in an already confused and terrorized community. And so, you know, the police and, and employees everywhere, employees apply for their job. They say, "I wanna work there." The people in the police department said, "I wanna work there." When they said, "I wanna work there," and they were given a contract, the contract is for them to follow policies and procedures and to demonstrate professional behavior. And when they don't, there's consequences. And what we have seen in this community and what we have seen through the testimony is that we have great policies and procedures, like we've heard. The problem we have in this community is we have selective adherence to those policies and procedures. And selective adherence is widespread. That has become clear in all the testimony. So if people start to say and criticize our police force, it's warranted. It, the testimony is coming right out of their mouths. They were paid to do a job. And the people that need protection are not the police with the guns. It's us in the community. I too do not feel safe in this town that I have lived in for forty-five years. If something happens to me, I don't, I, I think that they'll just let me burn to the ground. I don't feel safe. Not us feel safe. The only ones who feel safe are the ones that are connected to those that have the power in this town. And we need to stop that. We need to come back together as a community. We need new leadership. The people that testified were high-ranking officials in the police department. It frightens me to think that their subordinates are looking at that behavior. I've been in leadership, you guys know that. You know, when employees go rogue and they're allowed to go rogue, the whole area, the whole department gets demoralized. And you lose the good people and the bad people stay. And the good people say, "Why should I do my job?" Because look what they get. They don't do their job, and, and guess what? The town gets sued, $300,000. The agreement says the person's never gonna get promoted, and the person has been promoted multiple times. You know, so there's no consequences. We need protection. We are not feeling protected from this police department. We are not. And so we are asking for new leadership. And we do not want that contract renewed. And you will make the decision that you feel best, but we do not feel safe. And that is not feeling good to us. So I ask you, I, I appreciate you letting us speak. I appreciate not having the timer. You know, we wanna collaborate. We wanna work together, and we need a good foundation. We don't have it right now. So please, help us restore this town to what the beautiful town that it is. Let's get the leadership in place that we need, and let's move forward. That's all I'm happy to say.
Thank you, Rita. Eric.
Good evening. I have a question for the board.
Stand by yourself, please.
Jennifer O'Donnell. I have a question for the board.
No question.
Is it obvious that you backed the wrong horse yet? I have purposely not brought up the Karen Reed case to the select board meetings outside of speaking in memory of John O'Keefe. And I want, I won't pretend to know what happened that awful night. However, what is very clear is it wasn't Karen Reed. I'm not sure if you have been following, but the last hearing, we all got to watch Chris walk in behind a woman who gladly used her body to entrap a journalist for reporting too effectively. A human shield, smiling smugly, feeling so smart, while it's backfiring. Good smile, Chris. Chris has shown us how low he's willing to go. I believe the court was told she is family. Chris has taken to using people as collateral now, bending and twisting the laws and rules to his own needs. Chris Albert, you and the Commonwealth brought the circus to our town. You and your bad judgment call after bad judgment call are the reason so many keep showing up. It's that simple. You are the sideshow. You claim to be a scared witness. You're not scared, Chris. This is a game to you. Don't know what happened that night, but we do know what's happened ever since. And you continue to abuse the seat that you sit in and use your resource, our resources, as a town and a state for your personal protection, including using us as your human shield. You weren't scared when you singled me out at the courthouse, Chris. I stood in silence, exercising my First Amendment, holding this sign here. It's been the same sign that I've held ever since September. Would I be using that, you asked me, as you cocked your little head, would you be using this as your school committee campaign? No, Chris, because until you singled me out, I was able to keep these two completely separate. I have this sign from the start. We have Meatball Morrissey and corrupt. We have Meatball Morrissey and corrupt Proctor, infamous solo cops in a killer playlist. Nothing scary, nothing bullying, nothing about you, nothing about anyone else in this town. No mention of the McAlberts. You have used trashy people in court as a shield and you have used our town as a shield long enough. You and my, and the entire family and social circle are involved in this case to making, to involved to be making any sound judgments on behalf of our town. You should take the time to focus at home.
Thank you.
You should be embarrassed of yourself. You should be embarrassed of yourself. Embarrassed.
We're gonna stop the clapping. We're gonna get on to the next one or we're gonna stop this thing right now. Go ahead, next.
May the Lord protect you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, next.
Kristen Anderson. Good evening. As members of the board, you work for me, a random citizen. One of my expectations is to conduct yourself in a professional manner, especially when out in public. You are representing this town. However, attending a high-profile murder case, swearing at bystanders and making derogatory comments to other random citizens that are currently running for specific seats within the town. Well, that is extremely inappropriate and unacceptable and should not be tolerated. I know I do not tolerate it. With that being said, what part of, dude, you gotta go, do you not understand? Thank you and have a good evening.
Paul McCullough. Over the past several weeks and months, we've been lectured on things like decency, integrity, transparency, accountability and leadership with profanity-laced rhetoric by an individual running for a school committee position. I'll start by acknowledging that when Mrs. Schuman was here and read the letter in front of the board, it was obvious that it had its intended effect. She was upset and shaking. You don't have a heart if you didn't feel for her. The, the origin of the letter was never actually determined, but nobody questioned its impact on Ms. Schuman. And I think we can all agree that nobody should ever be made to feel that way. That being said, about two months ago, I myself received a communication from the individual in the running for school committee reading the following. Do you really want me to focus on you? Do you really want me to dig and find out your connection to the corruption? I've never done a thing to you or, she names the citizen who I have no personal affiliation with. This is my only suggestion, and I said the same to this unnamed citizen. Pretend I don't exist or prepare, misspelled, for me to fight back. I'm not fighting any one individual. I'm fighting to make a less toxic environment for all of our children. Why are yours in private? That's what I've been told. We have such great schools. Who's paying for the private school? I haven't wasted my time looking into you, but maybe it's time. Unlike the letter Ms. Schuman received, this, this message had a timestamp, date stamp, name and photo attached. What I have to say to this person is go ahead and dig, whatever the hell that means. I can tell you what you'll find. You'll find me probably laughing at something inappropriate or making a comment on social media that's maybe unpopular in your circle. You know what that means? It means I have a personality and that I'm flawed, just like you, just like every other person in this room and in town, everyone. And even though I'm nothing special, maybe you'll just ruin me forever. Wouldn't that be wonderful? Good for you. But in the meantime, while you try and dredge up something damning that'll cripple my reputation, I encourage you to take your own advice and instead pretend I don't exist. Don't talk about my kids anymore, ever. And don't threaten me. In fact, maybe rethink your entire approach on how you address people that think differently than you, especially if you're trying to secure their vote to help oversee the development of our children.
This way. Thank you, thank you, sir. I am not gonna allow any confrontation. I am not gonna allow any confrontations in here. Thank you. I'm gonna ask you to please, I'm gonna have you please take a seat.
Mark Grossman. Meadows Ave.
And this one, this is the last one?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gross.
We're, just first of all, everyone's respectful when you speak and you're not, you know, you're not the same. That was rude what you did to him.
This way.
So, um, I find it deplorable and utterly unfair for individuals who think they know the facts to issue a blanket denunciation of the town's police force, all of whom are decent, hard-working, respectful officers. To insinuate these officers are corrupt, officers that have grown up here and, uh, have families here would risk their pension, everything they've worked for in their career is insulting. I've grown up with numerous of them and know them and their families personally and to question their character is wrong. We are fortunate to have a great police department. Um, I just wanna say to the people that are here that are from out of town, I mean, there's really no, there's no, I mean.
This way.
There's no, I feel like there's no place for these people that don't live in Canton here for one reason and to cause problems. They don't care for the better of the town, uh, causing a mockery. And I think anyone that associates themselves, I mean, with them. I mean, these people like find a hobby, like, or go to your own town. I don't know why you're here. You know?
Okay, that's it, that's it.
Sit down. I'm gonna ask you to sit down or I'm gonna ask you to leave. I'm gonna ask you to sit down or leave.
He's stretching his legs.
But do not make a comment.
We have people coming here, all my glasses dressed up as a clown. I mean, it's ridiculous that I, you know, I just feel like this is, um, we should be concentrated, there's enough going on in Canton and, um, and we should focus on the issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
But that hasn't been 15 minutes. It hasn't been 15 minutes.
15 minutes, three minutes apiece. We have a motion to adjourn.
The clock, there was still, there was still six minutes left.
Second. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Come on.
Second.
The buzzer only went, the buzzer went off twice. How is that possible?
Thank you.
Five.
There's three more minutes.
Five.
Motion to adjourn.
It doesn't say five speakers. It says 15 minutes. You guys not understand that? Don't think that people don't see what the hell's going on here.
Modern people, nigger. Tell you're gonna be shot in the head. It's a shame for yourself. This is getting harder.
Oh my God.
Gosh.
Chris Albert, you and the Commonwealth brought the circus to our town. You and your bad judgment call after bad judgment call are the reason so many keep showing up. It's that simple. You are the sideshow. You claim to be a scared witness. You're not scared, Chris. This is a game to you. Don't know what happened that night, but we do know what's happened ever since. And you continue to abuse the seat that you sit in and use your resource, our resources as a town and a state for your personal protection, including using us as your human shield. You weren't scared when you singled me out at the courthouse, Chris. I stood in silence exercising my First Amendment, holding this sign here. It's been the same sign that I've held ever since September. Would I be using that? You asked me, as you cocked your little head, would you be using this as your school committee campaign? No, Chris, because until you singled me out, I was able to keep these two completely separate. I have this sign from the start. We have Meatball Morrissey and corrupt Proctor, infamous solo cops in a killer playlist. Nothing scary, nothing bullying, nothing about you, nothing about anyone else in this town. No mention of the McAlberts. You have used trashy people in court as a shield and you have used our town as a shield long enough. You and my, and the entire family and social circle are involved in this case to making, to involved to be making any sound judgments on behalf of our town. You should take the time to focus at home. Chris Albert, you should sit down.
You should be embarrassed. You should be embarrassed. In there.
No shame. There's no shame.
A little compilation over the last couple of years of Canton Select Board meetings. You can hear me, right? Yes, okay. Yeah, there is no Canton Select Board meeting tonight. It's, it's next Tuesday. I am taking calls. I saw a couple of calls come in earlier. It looks like they were having some, uh, video and audio issues. They were trying, I could see them logging back and forth. Maybe you wanna call back again, try it. We got the StreamYard link up. If anyone wants to comment tonight, let's do it. Pin in the chat. You got the StreamYard link? You wanna call in? You got something to say? Now's the time. I'm gonna read a couple, uh, super chats that came in. In the meantime, maybe I'll just call it early night. I wanna thank, uh, Junus. Junus Delakis? I think that's it. She upgraded twice today. She, she went, uh, all the way to the intermediate jerk membership. Thank you so much for, uh, joining tonight. And I wanna thank Please Pass the Pepper, who says Brenda is a leader, so impressive and eloquent. And then Recovery, uh, Three R Y Cat says Muppet Mike, stand your ground and keep doing what you're doing. Muppet Mike, that's the new one. It used to be Making Money Mike, Young Jelly, lot of nicknames. It's funny, cuz, uh, this week I, I felt like it's pretty funny to see that, uh, both KP and Aiden were going after me. It shows you where I stand, right? Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw the link in. Maybe I'll just call it a night. If no one wants to call in, maybe no one, that's the problem here. Some people don't wanna call in cuz they're obviously a little bit afraid to speak their mind. Sarah in Shock and Horrors is proud jerk for life. Love you, Jelly. Thank you so much, Sarah. Thanks for being here. Thanks for being our mod. I wanna thank our mod team. It was a good, great look back. We're gonna do a lot more of these. Yeah, it wasn't live tonight. We're, I mean, this is a live show, obviously. I'm live right now, but that was a compilation of some of the best of the Canton Select Board. Just looking back, Chris Albert, the apologies and the outbursts and some of the best speakers, Brenda, yeah, Brenda's all at the beginning. We put all the Brenda clips, a lot of Brenda clips at the beginning. You got a lot of Rita Lombardi, Sean Colburn, another one. I, I got many more Sean Colburn clips. He's really good. And, uh, Jennifer O'Donnell, you saw quite a bit of too. She's good too as well. Like I said, if we don't get any calls, it's fine too tonight. I saw the trolls in the, in the, in the chat noting the numbers. The numbers are up a little bit tonight. Oh, well, for an unannounced last-minute show against Lawyer, you know? Lawyer, as soon as we go live, 15 minutes before Lawyer, you know, goes live. I mean, that takes a lot of the audience every time, but I'm happy with who's here. And again, if you, if you don't wanna call in, like Sarah says, she's not feeling great tonight. I get it, believe me. Totally fine. But if you do, you, you got a minute to before I go. Yes, there is an announced candidate. I forget her name. I haven't really seen her campaigning too much, but it's early. I don't think the campaign's really gonna start until January, but there is someone running, definitely. How's the climate in Canton? Well, that's the thing. A lot of the video that we played from the last couple of years, it was about the police chief, right? Renewing a contract. She's gone. There's a new interim police chief. They're about to, they've got finalists and candidates for, you know, the, the permanent replacement police chief. So that's moving in the right direction. Canton Police Audit went through, unfortunately, it was kinda shitty, but that was a movement as well. And, uh, the last two elections, two, two select board members have been replaced, which never happens. And, uh, we'll see again in the spring. Chris Albert's gonna be up for reelection. He's not gonna win. And Michael Morrissey's not gonna win. So lot has changed and, and that's why I wanted to play this tonight, just to give everyone focus on maybe what, what, what we did and what's important going forward. And if you wanna talk about the bullshit that happened today. It's funny cuz I, I've taken the biggest hit on my channel and none of this bullshit really involves me. Just because I spoke the truth and tried to tell people you need to wake up, all of you, all you YouTubers, Aiden himself and his dick riders. I told the truth and look what's gone on ever since. I thought you guys wanted the truth. I, I know the folks who are here right now, supporting me, my main core. I know you want the truth. I know you respect it. But there's a bigger audience that they do not want to hear the truth. Pretty fucking sad. Pretty sad. And they should obviously, like this one, you're a loser. No, you're, is, uh, oh, you're talking about Chris. Okay, I get what you're saying. You're talking about Chris Albert. It's funny cuz sometimes we misinterpret the, uh, but yeah, the dick riders. You're not a dick rider. The friggin' dick riders. They made it happen. They wanna be entertained. They want TMZ. They want, they wanna, they want more fake victims. They're looking forward to the next fake victim. I mean. A link if anyone wants to call in tonight, before I drop off. I wanna thank the super chatters. We got a few super chats tonight. I love it. Uh, Sheri D says Muppets Mike is really cute to me, probably cuter than me. Probably cuter than me. Thank you, Mia Abito. I wanna thank, uh, Victoria, Victoria Neg, Victory Neg? You gotta tell me how to say that. Thank you so much. And, uh, Sarah, of course. I wanna thank all of our super chatters tonight. Yeah, the truth, the truth has been out there too for a while. It, it's, and it's pretty obvious, the more, every day that goes by. Uh, you have. I know. Uh, WhatUp says, I have people in my family that were wrestlers and are wrestlers. That's awesome. And once you're a wrestler, you're always a wrestler. So that's great. Love it. Glamour Sue says happy two years to me. Thank you Glamour Sue for being here. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, we, like, you know, there's so much that's gone on. Just enough. Enough is enough. See, this is, this is the stupidity that goes on. This is, this is how, I'm gonna call you out, baseball dad. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be personal, but your, your statement is, is like so ignorant. Yes, it's obvious that Meredith recorded Aiden and Karen's phone call. The dude has admitted it. He's admitted it. He admitted it. Do you understand that? He admitted it. In, in text messages, on his show, he has fucking admitted it. He recorded it. Not Meredith, you, you're a fool. Pay attention. Stop speaking and pay attention. Do you think I'm, seriously? Do you think I'm a fucking idiot that, that I'm gonna go on that bullshit? I've authenticated it. Remember, oh, she authenticated, she authenticated it. You know where she got it? She got it from Aiden. She admitted it today. Machado admitted it. Machado has admitted it. Did you see Chris Koala call up Machado? He's got the receipts. Are you paying attention? Is there anything in the brain? Jesus Christ, people. If you don't want the truth, don't come here because we we're telling. Yeah, Jess spilled it. She told Jess spilled it. And what do you think Machado is gonna do if the feds or or the state police come to her? What do you think she's gonna do? If she's already flipping on her show, what do you think she's gonna tell them? Are you guys waking up yet? And you guys kept egging her on egging him on. Go after Meredith. Think we have a call here. Uh you have to turn on your device, though. All right, perfect. Meredith is here.
Hey, Mike, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, what's up, Meredith?
Sorry, my phone. I just got your message that you were going live. Did you did you play the Holly Hunter in the Greedessits?
No, I I skipped that. I mean, yeah, I I play. I played a bunch of, you know, I I went with Canton residents. I'm not gonna go with the uh
Yeah, not. Yeah, the period of the anonymous call. That was funny. At least they're back to in person ones now, but um anyways, yeah, no, I think I wasn't planning on joining just because I don't have a lot of time, but just the comment I did hear you reading about um the fact that somebody is still thinking that I was the one recording them is just, I mean, it just tells you. Yeah, I mean, I I have a feeling like that that was a surprise to better of now that I called that out that I wasn't anywhere near Aiden at the time. We weren't even speaking. Um it was it was told me I I learned this a couple of weeks ago that he had tried to frame me to better. Um he'd been denying he like that he recorded Karen and all right up until the recording started leaking and he was so embarrassed um to have to admit to better that he did indeed record Karen that he decided to throw me under the bus and the time that he did this, this was when he was still asking me to cover for him and lie about it. So that was kind of one of the very final straws for me was that he was gonna he had no problem. It was already circulating. I was being accused of sharing illegal wiretapping, but um the fact that he was gonna throw me under the bus for the wiretapping itself. It's just again, this is one of the many last straws that that got us to where we are today.
Believable how many receipts you've dropped that people will not look at. They just won't look at them.
Yeah.
And they're calling you crazy.
Yeah, not everybody's on Twitter and that's that's fine. We're working on.
Even the ones on Twitter, though. I I just can't believe how many people ignore it. Like even like I I somebody I considered serious today and followed because I couldn't believe she was going after you. It just it's to me, it's sick at this point because the receipts are there. You're posting the damn receipts and they're in denial.
Well, this is what Aiden counted on. He counted on people just either just blindly listening to him. Aiden says so is proof without any receipts and that it wouldn't like the actual receipts wouldn't reach um beyond Twitter. I I get some are just ignoring them and doing it, but that's that's like, I don't think that's really representative of the whole population and I'm working with somebody to get another platform up and running to be just start to finish, start with his first couple of streams about me and just stop and pause, stop, show receipts, stop and pause and um put it in a format, everything I've kind of shown on Twitter um to somewhere that everybody else can get. Um I'm actually on vacation after this week until January. So I mean, you've seen what I've I've come up with just while while juggling my full time job and other stuff, so it'll be interesting to see what I can what I can do when I'm off of work on vacation next week.
We tried to play the stream, the um X space the other night. There was a lot of technical issues. One of the things that you mentioned that kind of got cut out is some of these idiots have done DCF complaints against you, right?
Yep, yep, that's right. So um I got a call last week in the middle of the week about a DCF report that was made and uh spoke with her, had to do a home visit yesterday and I actually was read some of the allegations that were made in the the report. Um things from abuse to me doing drug use. Uh I loved the one where it said I uh attended Karen Reed hearings and left my child unattended all day. My child is almost sixteen years old, so she's in school. First of all, and second, she yes, she's almost sixteen. She can almost drive. She she spends time home alone. I don't know what um almost sixteen year old doesn't. Um and the best one was that uh my child is missing and was last seen a year ago. And this is, I don't think it's a coincidence. This crazy report was made just days after Aiden goes on his stream making all kinds of false allegations, um defamation. I've spoken with a lawyer about that already. There's just open and shut nonstop. It's just then just the calls to my work. It's it's not. It's not a coincidence at all what he's done. So yeah, there unfortunately been real life consequences. I've been dealing with the last couple of days or the last week since this all started, but um yeah, I mean, managing it as best as I can, speaking with lawyers and we'll see what happens.
It's wild. I just can't believe how uh people still are calling you crazy while you're dropping all these receipts that show somebody else is pretty crazy.
Aiden knows I'm a good mom. He he was around and like the lies like I'm not gonna lie and say he was doing drugs. I never witnessed it. There's so many lies that the troll, the other side has always said and spread and they want me to jump on that bandwagon, but at this point he's there's enough bad things he actually has done that I can show receipts for. I don't need to make things up like he's doing about me.
I know that's the fact. It's just like it's never ending and um I just don't even. It shows you how reckless he is when he knows you have all that. He 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 went after you, you know, through all his little minions. Did I lose you? Oh, I think I lost you. Shit. I will bring it back up. Hold on. There you go. Yeah, we can.
Sorry, I'm on my browser. I'm not on an app or anything. Um yeah, I was talking about that with somebody today. It's like I haven't even I'm on like almost hour three of his first stream just when Auntie Deb comes on and just the little like that I've listened to and I've been. It takes me all thirty seconds to search in my phone and find just proof of like a one of his lies. It it's I mean, he did clearly didn't think this through. I think he counted on me getting scared, him bullying me and that I would just be quiet and then let this let his word stand as the record of my reputation like he says, he admits, at least I think on the stream that he knows how smart I am, how um legal savvy I was with his case. Did he really? Is he really surprised that I'm gonna present receipts to stand up for myself and defend my reputation on this? Um I mean, I guess he underestimated me to be honest, but the thing that's driving me nuts now is he's now like backtracked the last couple of days pretending he's heartbroken over this, that he's so disappointed in me for doing this, as if the last weekend where he did four streams in a row dedicated to me saying disgusting vile things about me sexually. Everything, false claims about um me doing drugs, about how what kind of mother I was. Everything just rewriting the history of our relationship and pretending that didn't happen as playing he's he's the victim now. I think today he said something like I'm gonna take the high road and just stop so that me continuing to defend myself and clearing up his lies is me attacking him like it's just it's so transparent. It's so predictable and he's not gonna continue to play the fake victim anymore.
Funny because uh he used that fake victim on everybody else and and he really looks like the fake victim in so many things here. Um and it sucks because I I mean, I don't. I never wanted to see him go down. I wanted to see him get better. I did. I thought he would. It felt like he was keeping it together for a while. And I I think it might have been because of you. I don't know. But uh why do you think he's like spiraled? Because ever since Karen's been acquitted, he had a golden goose. He had a money tree. He had every opportunity in the world. And it just has gone south. Why? Why do you think he's gone this way? Is it because of the Karen situation? Is it because he thinks he's gonna be convicted and go to jail? Is it ego? What what is going on with him?
I don't. I don't know. He's not. He says that he doesn't know me like the person anymore, but it's I don't know him. I mean, ever since I mean, the her she was acquitted on June eighteenth and then we broke up less than a month later and it's just been spiral after spiral. I don't even know who he is anymore. Um I mean, with Karen, it's always been about control for him and he he's he was convinced himself of this in his head. She owes him everything because he went to jail, but he neglects to point out the fact or even acknowledge that he has made millions of dollars off of her. Um before before her her story, which was essentially fed to him. He he had his income was a fraction of what it is. His following was a fraction of what it is now and he he still thinks like he acts and this is the same thing with um Will. It can be said with Will, like obviously not to the extent Aiden has um done well like money wise from this, but Will, Kim, all of these people, they didn't Auntie Deb, they didn't have the following they did before Karen Reed and they they all follow along with this. Oh, Karen owes Aiden everything. I mean, this recording that he did have heard where he thought it was gonna convince everybody to turn against her. I mean, she's right. She he should thank her. He should. He should thank her. When is he gonna thank her for this? Um I mean, he couldn't afford to get divorced before this. He yes, he went to jail, but again, impulsive decisions and he did change a lot after jail and I again, people can say, yes, I there were red flags and I was stupid for trusting you, but he did. It was convincing how he changed. I think he really did want to be better for a while and he was more serious and he was like elevating his career, but unfortunately, deep down, he's he's just stuck and that's why he's never really gonna elevate past where he is. I mean, he has his core diehard fa followers who like there could be a video of him killing someone tomorrow and they'll still follow him and won't believe it, but um I don't know. It's sad to see because he he really like he did have a lot of potential, but just I think just the lack of self-awareness is a big part of it because in his mind, he doesn't see it this way at all that he benefited more from his relationship with Karen than um than she did and he was a liability like just like with me right now. He I think he thinks in his mind that he didn't start all this and he's convinced himself that that I did despite months of me ignoring his behind the scenes stuff, his leaking stuff, um all of it. I mean, him framing trying to frame me for the recording in his mind, I'm still like the one who who did all this and he's a victim in his mind. It's I don't know. He was doing therapy for a while when we were together. I I another thing I set up for him. I figured out what insurance like would take his online or what online therapies would take it as insurance and everything. And he was doing it regularly and I think it it helped. Um I don't know if he was totally honest with the therapist about things, but it did. I did see some improvements, but until he he gets like some serious help, I mean, I I just don't know how how it can change.
It's a comment that came in. And I'm just gonna say like to Bob, I'm gonna put it up here. You've been here a long time, Bob. But you your comments lately have been so goddamn foolish. But I'm gonna let Meredith respond to it. But I just gotta say, Bob, I'm ashamed of you. Bob says Aiden stayed quiet about Meredith until she started shit talking. Let's let's address that first.
Yeah, so he was not quiet. He was giving things to people like Justin Machado, Joe Flipperhead. Um and then the latest was Chelsea. He was telling his lawyer that I trying to frame me for a crime he committed. I mean, the list goes on of things that I that have come out and I've stayed silent for 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 months from him, so this wasn't um me starting this. This was me purely defending myself after months of him going on the offense against me, so that and then the second part, the the hacking.
Let me just add one, two cents. Let me add two cents on that. Number one, I saw all of that happen. So I'm backing you one hundred percent on that because that's what we all viewed on X and Twitter. We saw everything that you just said. And I also want to go back to your point about Karen Reed. I'm very thankful for Karen Reed for what she did for my channel. And um I feel like I owe Karen Reed and I would never fuck over a victim. She's a victim. Uh I've been. You know what I've been doing this weekend? I was watching her locked up in jail with her her wrist up. You know, and a chain. When with the booking videos that LTL posted. I am thankful for Karen Reed and her family and I owe her. And uh I don't see how any YouTuber that grew like we did can't come out and say that. And how do you expect anything from her? I expect nothing for Karen. I am the YouTuber that doesn't have a picture with Karen. No selfie. You know why? It's not because I haven't met Karen. I met her several times. I've had dinner with her. Because I didn't ask her for it. I don't ask her for anything. And the thing I love about Karen Reed, she's never asked me for anything. So that's the reality on Karen Reed and Karen Reed is a nice lady. Her family is wicked nice. So that's what I want to say on that. You want to respond to and she hacked him because Bob is still delusional. He still doesn't actually pay attention to the facts of what's going on here. Uh he put shit on your computer, didn't he?
On my computer?
Yeah, didn't he download the extraction to your computer?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that's the sub the extraction that he's he claimed that I before we talk about that quickly, though, I wanted to say that was really well said, Mike, and that's just one of the things like that really like upset me about this whole thing where we've gotten to the point where Aiden is openly and others calling her uh calling Karen a cunt and it's encouraged and just with this drop shot like this slow shade that's been just dropped slowly um behind the scenes and like publicly that we've gotten to this point and it just makes me really sad because she is like such a nice person and her family as well. It it just it makes me really sad and I hope that they're not. They're not seeing all this. Um it's just gross. But yeah, back to the hacking thing. So this is something I've addressed with actual receipts on my Twitter, but again, working on getting on YouTube like there was no, there was no hacking. There was no like to this day, Aiden hasn't shown any proof of of hacking. Um the Facebook account, it was an account I made myself in two thousand eighteen and I get like let Aiden use it with me during twenty twenty four. Um and then he changed it to A Timothy Carney in twenty twenty five when Clarence got suspended. He knew I still had access to the account. He like had me use it for like stuff for business purposes. There are texts that I posted of him acknowledging me on the account, me like using it like it was not a secret, me fixing it, me getting his ID up so that he could get it. And then the last text about the Facebook account was in August when he was like, do you still want it? Um I was like, I guess not. I just used it to spy in Sean's group. I posted all of these texts evidencing that I wasn't in the account at the time of the call and that's really the bottom line is that I wasn't in the shared Facebook account. And again, if he if he thought I was in it, why is he sending shit like this? That's like like legal. Like first of all, I wasn't and to this day, he hasn't shown a single screenshot of thing of proof that I was in the account at the time of the call on August twenty ninth. But second, why is he still like sharing stuff? Now his latest allegation is I'm sharing an old video of him and Lindsay. Like, why would I want to even see that or share it? Like, what would that like? It it makes no sense. When Aiden Aiden does things like this is classic Aiden. He shares things. He forgets who he shares with. He forgets who he tells who he shares it with. He overshares. And then when he's caught and gets in trouble, he blames hacking or this person or that person and too many people just say, oh, take Aiden says so is proof. Meanwhile, I've shown receipts. There's no hacking. This is Aiden sharing things again and trying to blame his bad behavior for others and deflect.
The guy's been hacked so many times now. And how many times has he had issues with ex-girlfriends too? I mean, this is a pattern. But uh unlike the other ones, he didn't include them in in the business like he included you. Which means you have all the receipts, which this is really dumb for anybody to go to war with somebody that has the receipts like you do and and I just don't get how stupid some of these uh dick riders are that they don't see what's actually happening here.
Yeah, I mean, that and that's what he was banking on. He was banking on me just getting scared and him being able to bully and use his usual tactics like he does with everybody, but that's not happening. You don't get to just um screw with somebody's child with my job and try to destroy my reputation and think I'm gonna go down without a fight.
And what did D D uh D DFC or whatever they called? What did they DCF? What did they? What was their attitude when they came to see you today? Do they understand what's actually happening here?
Um it was yesterday and yeah, so I had explained to her over the phone what was going on. It was a similar thing that I had to do with my work that I have an ex-boyfriend who has all these open felonies. He has a history of getting orders on him. He has a history of sending his followers. He's a platform and they go and attack people's jobs and and everything and what he said is are lies before I even heard what these anonymous allegations were. And she was like, okay, I understand it. And she was familiar with who he is and she's like, we still are required to do this visit. And she came and it was like, yeah, it was obvious. It was a waste of time. My daughter's happy. She's healthy. She's lives a very privileged charmed life, which she could see when she walked right into our apartment um and and spoke with her and unfortunately too, because of the law, she has to also go visit um my ex, my daughter's father. And so he's getting dragged into it too. And again, like this whoever did this report, they they thought this was gonna be some gotcha, but it's like we don't have any issues here. I don't have like a DCF history or anything. This is taking away resources of social workers that act for kids. So many kids who fall through the cracks and don't get help. This that's all this is doing is hurting other people at this point. And I know like some of his followers, whoever did this, they're probably they DCF is a regular thing in their life and they're one visit away from losing custody of their kids. They thought this would be some big like ooh, but it's it's really not nothing more than a hassle to me. Um and it's only hurting other people who actually need DCF. So but again, yeah, just with one or two, what are we on? Almost two weeks of this? but again, yeah, just with one or two, what are we on? Almost two weeks of this since Chelsea came in, um, and blew everything up. And yeah, this is the turmoil that he's caused in my life. He doesn't just get to walk away and, and not expect me to defend myself.
Could be a crime.
Yeah, I'm being told by multiple people, this is witness intimidation. I mean, despite his conspiracy that I was like, besides trying to frame me for doing the recording, he's also said that I like planned this with Karen from the start to like conspired with her and Joe Flipperhead, well, not Joe anymore, cause Joe's okay now, but to like try and get, set him up and get him in jail and this crazy thing. But despite like what he says, I didn't really talk to Karen about this until after the recordings leaked. And I was just, and, and Joe started like hinting at me recording. I was like, just so you know, like I didn't, I didn't leak them. So there was no like conspiracy in this. But yeah, people have come to me now that they know that I did like hear, he did play the recording for me and I am admitting that they're like, this is actually witness intimidation, what he's doing to you. And I, I was, I never wanted to get to this. Like I would never wanna get him in trouble legally, but now he's doing things that are screwing with my real life and he's like sending Justin Schatter to call my work and stuff like when, why is that okay? These people who scream free speech and First Amendment and because I'm defending myself to, to what he said against me, I should have, I should lose my job over that? Like, give me a break.
Oh, disgusting. Disgusting, especially too, when they know about the wiretapping. I mean, they received the, the wiretap and lot, you know, it's just amazing what's been going on here. It's just amazing.
Yeah. And the people joining in on this are just, are, I mean, they're not quite as bad as Aiden, but they're sick too, like Jimmy and Will and Jess and Nurse Kim, they all heard the recording. They're all lying about it. Well, Jess has finally come clean. Today, she finally said for the first time that that Aiden recorded Karen. So that's the second person who was saying that now, or I mean, a lot of people have been saying it, but somebody who with direct to um, like direct source it from Aiden is admitting that he recorded her. Um, Nurse Kim is still, last I tracked denying hearing it despite Jess confirming she heard it. I know she heard it. She told me, so she told me firsthand, she heard it when I talked to her back in October. When she was upset with Jess for kinda throwing her under the bus. She told me she heard it. She didn't know it was illegal at the time. Like, okay, somebody who follows Turtle Boy avidly, doesn't understand like wiretapping laws, whatever. And she's like, I don't know, like I feel bad. Maybe I would've told Karen if I knew it was illegal, but I'm scared of Aiden, which I get. And my problem with her isn't for lying that she heard it, cause I get being scared of Aiden, but joining the bandwagon of gaslighting Karen, saying like Karen, Karen knows I didn't hear. She, she, she's Karen's lying and Karen's like awful for being upset about being recorded. And also Meredith is crazy for saying I heard it. It's just, that's, that's the issue that, that I have with her and Will and Jess and Jimmy who have all joined in on this.
Awful. Um, any, any final thoughts you wanna leave us with tonight? I know you only have a limited time.
Yeah, I could, you gotta run just um, get dinner going. But I mean, I just, again, I never wanted it to come to this point. This isn't, I'm not a YouTuber. I'm not a content creator. I literally just wanted to be left alone and I ignored a lot for a long time. I mean, the things Joe Flipperhead is putting out, sharing our texts, which we now know was on purpose so that Aiden didn't get his hands dirty. I ignored quite a lot for quite a long time and I never wanted it to get to this, but there comes a point where you, you have to defend yourself. You can't just let the record stand that you're, you're, you've done all these things and you're this person that you're not. So I really didn't want it to get here. I don't, I don't like, I don't want Aiden to get in trouble legally. I don't want him to go to jail, but I mean, unfortunately, like, I've just been, I don't know, we've gotten to this point and I never wanted us to get here. That's all aside.
You know, the more this goes on, the more likely he is to go to jail. And I don't think people who are being entertained, watching a show realize that every time they cheer him on, they're moving him close to the jail cell. That's what I feel. Do you feel that way too?
Yeah, I mean, he, he, his lawyers cannot be advising him to do any of this. I can't imagine they wanted him to do even one show on it. Um, I mean, sharing those videos and stuff with Chelsea, which is the catalyst to this whole thing blowing up. I can't imagine they encourage that. Um, just unfortunately, he has people like Jess who are egging this on and Will who won't give him any good, nobody wants to stand up to him and tell him like the hard.
No one wants to be a friend.
Yeah.
None of them are friends. They're, none of them are real friends, you know? I, it's funny, cause I, I see Bradel and I was friends with Beddero, obviously. But um, you know, I don't, I don't talk to them about this, but I, I can't imagine. I, I, I even feel like with me, even with me, I feel like they must be like, what the fuck you doing going after Mike? Never mind you. You know, even me.
It's, it's sad and I'll never say anything bad about Beddero, but I mean, he, there's no chance he's like, it, it has to be what Aiden is just ignore, fully ignoring the advice of his lawyers because Better and I often saw eye to eye on a lot of things Aiden and I, there were a couple of times where he was gonna do something and I just went to bed. I was like, he's gonna do this. I don't think he should do it. I like, I hope I'm not overstepping. He's like, no, you're not like, agree. Don't, I'm telling him now not to do it. I'm not even gonna go into specifics at this point, but like, so there's no, there's no chance in hell he is uh, co-signing any of this, these latest outbursts. There's just no chance. Um, I mean, the latest thing with that Twitter account, like good God. And again, these are things I never wanted to get out there, but you push somebody too far with with lies and I mean, just going after my life. It's like, what did you expect?
You know, this is a great comment right to here. I can't wait to hear from Karen one day. I mean, that's another one. I think, I think, I, you know, knowing Beddero, like I said, folks, I haven't talked to him about this. I stopped talking to Beddero when all this shit happened, cause I respect Beddero as an attorney and I'm not gonna try to use my friendship to hit him up and complain about this or say anything about it. So we haven't talked. But I just wonder even about the Karen shit too. I mean, we mentioned you and me, but Karen too. I, I can't imagine what his attorneys are saying about him and all this Karen bullshit. Cause when Karen speaks and Alan Jackson speaks, which is gonna happen eventually. I mean, what do you think about that? The, the final thought, what do you think about the Karen stuff too?
Yeah, I mean, it was just, it's just more of the same of ignoring the advice of counsel and he's, he's never wrong. He's always right. Um, I don't know. I mean, I'm not gonna, obviously I'm not gonna speak for her, but I think a lot of people are gonna feel really silly when they do finally talk about all this.
I'm not gonna forget. You know? I, I, I think I'm a forgiving guy and have sympathy, but on this stuff, I, it's gonna be hard for me to forgive with all the bullshit that's going on with a lot of these people. Cause once you see it, you see it. You realize that people aren't actually here for justice or victims. They're, they're here for their bullshit and, and I've just had enough of that.
Yeah, I, I get the staying stock, the staying silent, but those who have joined in on the attacks, no, it's, I won't forgive. And then just friends that I've lost from this that have, have immediately just blindly switched. It's really disappointing and it's, it's sad, but it's, it's all making me stronger. So.
We, we, we wish the best for you. Um, I hope everyone in the chat gives uh, love and support and prayers for Meredith in the chat tonight. And uh, I hope you have a good vacation. You're on vacation or are you going on vacation?
After this week, this is my last week of work. I always take this time of year off before my busy season starts up in January. So after Friday is my last day until I'm back in January. So.
Awesome.
Yeah. Well, thanks for having me on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. If anyone else wants to call in quickly before we go, I'll, I'll, it's pinned in the chat right now. Stream yard, you got a couple of minutes to do so. Uh, maybe I'll throw a couple more comments, especially the haters. I enjoy the haters at this point. One person says Beddero should've stuck with Mike. He can't though. I mean, Beddero is representing Aiden Carney. You know what I mean? This, there's no his one. Dizzy Wells says, two losers finding each other clearly Beddero and Nurse Kim and not Young Jerk says a lot. Well, I haven't asked Beddero since this all shit went down. And that's what Dizzy Walls should recognize. Is that I, I gave up my moneymaker. Not about the money or the clicks. You know? So you can call me loser all you want, Dizzy, but you're here defending the undefendable. And long-term, people aren't gonna forget what you did. So maybe you should think twice, Dizzy Walls, about what you're actually defending. Because every day, more and more people have seen the truth. Yeah. I mean, I'm glad I could give Earth some space tonight to talk. Right. I think I'm done. Unless anyone else wants to call. This is the last call. Last call for calling in. I saw a couple of you try to call in earlier. I don't know what happened. It looked like it wasn't working for you. I'll throw it in the, I'll throw it in the chat one more time. So anyone wants to watch or call in, excuse me, stream yard in. You got the link right there. It is sad too. Someone said I'm sad for what's going on. It is sad. The whole goddamn thing is sad. The King hearing last week? I didn't even know there was a King hearing last week. I thought it was this week. Jesus Christ. I gotta look into that. I thought, I thought it was this week. Thought there was a big King hearing coming up this week, maybe. I don't know. Of course I, I respect that. I mean, that's, that's what Beddero is here for, right? It's the thing, you won't see me in any of that drama. My life is very stable. Thank God. And I'm not, you know, it's funny, cause I had some issues. I had some issues back in the day. A while back. Not on this level, but similar. And that's why I can kinda see it. I could see it coming a mile away. I've seen this in myself and others. When you get involved in activism and advocacy and all that stuff, it's very easy to get this kind of martyr complex and also um, you can do no wrong. To go on the attack and fight people and defend yourself and get crazy. It's very easy to go there. And it's the downfall every single time. It's one, it's one of the reasons I said I had a lot of ups and downs. This is my first rodeo. This is the first time I've been popular. I may not have been as popular as I got with Karen Reed, but I have had some rides where I did become the big guy in the small pond. And that's what a lot of this is right now. All right, we have a caller D. Let's see what D's got to say. D, do you wanna comment tonight?
Yeah, I'm kinda disappointed in, in, in what you're saying to not. Because everybody has a voice of their opinions and if we're to judge off of someone else's creator, how is anybody any better at doing that? And I've been a subscriber of yours, of yours for two months. And the drama and the negativity.
What about receipts though? We talk about receipts and evidence.
We don't know where these receipts are coming from, do we?
What, what about when a person admit, wait, wait, wait. Let me ask you this. What about when a person says there's no evidence? They didn't do it. Then it's AI and then they, and then they admit it.
Okay, well, let me ask you this, because you know.
I just asked you a question. Yeah, wait, wait, wait. D, I, I have limited time. I have one more person in the chat. I asked you a question. I want an answer. And the question is, somebody with a big platform, wiretap somebody. They denied it. Then they said it was AI. Their, their little subordinate said it was AI. And then they've admitted it. And their patriots have admitted it too. Does that matter to you that they lied to you?
It does matter to me, but also I've been in that same situation where I've had somebody record me in my home and try to get me um, through DHS for accusations that were untrue. And if I hadn't had them recordings on somebody, I'd have lost my kids. So this is where I have a problem with. And I don't think it's fair for anybody to judge. And I get it, you're a creator. But the attacking of people in my opinion, and I go for good vibes, but all way out of with personal relations needs in personal ships. And
Are you, you're breaking up a little bit.
I'm just upset with all the bickering between creators and I love all you creative. Most of them. As long as it's not drama. But it just seems like all this is a jealousy thing? Or is
Who's jealous?
Someone trying to attack. No, 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 no.
Who's jealous of what?
Okay, I'm gonna put it this way. When Karen walked out that court, I was of Karen's. When she walked and said, I am the only person because we all
You're breaking up. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the next call. I appreciate you calling D, but it's hard to understand what you're saying. You got a bad connection. Maybe next time.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Viper, you have something to say tonight?
Yes. Hi, Mike. Um,
Hello.
I'm very sad that all of us people were all fighting together and now there's such different divisions for different reasons. I, I, it's just sad.
It is.
And I'm, you know, uh, I, I appreciate you. Um, I've watched you since uh, uh, beginning, the first trial of Karen Reed. And a lot, um, and LTL and uh, all of you. Um, it's just, I just feel, I'm just sad. I guess that's my whole thing, that uh, there's just so much division right now and I just pray the anger and all the stuff that's going on, um, you know, can somehow be done. I don't know how. Um, I, I know I did hear some of the rants of Turtle Boy. Um, I was really shocked what I was hearing and, and, but there's always two sides to every story and I hadn't heard Meredith's side yet, you know? And I, I believe in doing that. And I got to hear a little bit of her tonight and I, I do wanna hear more, but then I'm just, again, just sad. I'm sad that all of you are hurt and upset and angry and saying things to each other and I just pray that people can somehow forgive.
You know, it's funny, cause when you hear Meredith speak, she doesn't sound crazy to me. And she throws up a lot of direct receipts. He's not showing any receipts and he's very dramatic and, and name-calling. What do you compare? I mean, I don't, to me, I don't understand how people are taking the other side. I just don't, cause they look crazy to me. They look crazy and they, they're lying. I mean, when you hear her speak, what did you think? Did she sound crazy or did she sound reasonable? Cause to me, she sounds very reasonable.
Well, as a, I can actually say I'm a, uh, was a victim of domestic violence severely. Um, I never support anybody verbally or physically harming somebody in any way, no matter what. Um, I didn't hear her sound at all. Uh, like she was crazy. She sounded like she was concerned about what was going on in her life. And uh, I, I don't know. I'm in a whole nother state and I only listen to all of you. You know, through podcasts. And uh, and I'm just, I just don't know what the hell is going on. Excuse my language. Sorry.
It's the hard part is a lot of people are watching this from afar, where more of us locals have more direct experience with the individuals and the situation and it's funny, cause I feel like most of the boots on the ground. They don't support him anymore. And this was long before all this Karen stuff came out. You know, this has been going on for a long time. I played Jennifer O'Donnell tonight.
Oh, okay.
A lot of shit went down with her. And I even And I even feel bad because I feel like I feel like I was even part of it, like I was part of it against her.
Yeah, I came in late on your show.
Let me let me finish my comment and then you can comment. I I feel like a lot of times, a lot of us have joined in on it when we shouldn't have. And we like a lot of us see it for what it is now. And it's gone on, not just one person, not just the ex-girlfriends, not just over and over and over again. And some people could say maybe Jen kind of earned it, like someone said, I mean, she did do some crazy shit. But at the same time, it was it was a lot. And it's a lot to go through for people, and especially when you're at your wits end. Which is what happens to a lot of people, you know, that one of the reasons I was happy to take the hits the last couple of weeks. That I don't give a fuck. You know, some of these other people that are getting attacked, they can't handle it. So if he wants to attack me for two to three weeks, fine. I don't give a fuck. Because I know who I am. I know how strong I am. I know I can walk away from this. I can go walk dogs for a living. Other people can't handle this. Their families can't handle it. And there's been a lot of people and I don't want to name them because then they start getting attacked again. And there's been a lot of people that haven't done shit. And I will say one name. What about LTL? LTL did nothing except support Aiden Carney, raise money for him. People destroyed him for no friggin reason. Lot of people like that who have stepped up and supported. And sometimes people could say, oh, they deserved it. They did something wrong. LTL did nothing. There's been a lot of that. You want to speak on it, Viper?
Yes, um, I I did hear when I did start hearing some stuff that and I'm not gonna bring names up because I'm not I'm that kind of person. Um, they know who they are and people who heard them do. I don't believe in be putting people down. Just because you have a you think you have a right. I I know that LTL got yelled at about stuff and I I heard that show and I had to turn it off because it really triggers me, stuff like that. But that's, you know, me, I I just don't believe in putting people down just because you can. I don't believe in going and uh hurting people's feelings because you can. Um, I know we have freedom of speech, but I believe that we need to start using our speech and our words a more kinder way. And I'm sorry. Uh. Up to the people that have been hurt because they don't have any right to if they didn't do anything wrong. LTL, I like him. I've called in on his show before. He he has good shows. Uh, as of you, you know, uh, I Melanie Little um and the others that I've called in on at one time or other. I just believe that there's just people, there's just too much unkindness right now out there again and I just pray that things can get better for everybody and that people don't use their words to hurt anymore.
Definitely. I hope so. I I really like your call. It's been a good call, Viper. I really appreciate you calling in. And kind of hear it. Let me speak too and get get some of this off my chest. Um. You know, another one that really bothered me was the James Jackson stuff. I thought that was just so gross. You know? It's like, what way to kick, way to way to kick a young guy down. That has had a lot of struggles. And is now on the right path. That that that's what pisses me off like because I've had struggles and when you start to come up, you're getting whacked. And and I'm not saying James was perfect. Some of the stuff he said, he got a little riled up. But it got crazy. I mean, it got and it and it he didn't start this, you know? There's a couple of people who started this bullshit, you know, and it's because they didn't want the truth to come out. And they wanted to attack the people that were asking questions. And the truth is out there now. The truth is out there and uh you know, like Watergate, the worst part of it was the cover up.
Correct.
That's what's been going on here. And the cover up just made it worse. More shits come out, just like more and more comes out. The more you push back on people and attack people. The more that's going to come out because some of us aren't going to back down. Some of us are going to be like you. And that's what Meredith is. Meredith is like, I'm not backing down.
Well, nobody should back down when somebody is uh purposely um hurting in one way or the other. Uh. They shouldn't. And um they always say, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger. I'm not sure if I agree with that one yet.
Depends if you can survive it. I mean, and I I try to look at things in the positive light. There's obviously some. It hurts you. It does hurt. It can definitely hurt you, but it can also make you stronger if you if you survive it and find ways to cope and get around it and and look back on it, you know?
Well, I know you're really angry and I don't blame you.
I'm not angry. Um, you know, I you know, I I am not angry. That's that's the funny thing. I'm not angry. I'm I'm disappointed. I'm sad. You know? And mostly what I'm sad about is is the people at home. Who were sitting there saying all these awful things about these all, you know, I could say all the names and it's like they don't know what's actually going on. They think they do. But they really don't.
Right.
You know, and that's what pisses me off the most if if I get angry. It's it's the what I call the dick riders, the enablers.
Well.
The ones that that want to send a super chat to get praise from the daddy. It's like they are so focused on themselves and being stars that they don't recognize that this was supposed to be about justice, not about your frickin ego. Not about your relationship, not about you, you getting ahead or who's your friend? What they can do for you? I that's not why I'm here.
Oh, I know. I know. I've watched you for what? Well, since the Karen Reed case. That's a lot of years that poor woman went through and everybody else that, you know, I I I still remember, you know what? I wish people could remember this for one thing. You know, just stop feeling, you know, bitchy at each other. And remember the day that we were all together, all around the world. And when Karen that Karen verdict was read and how we were all cheering the same time in in the world.
And you know what? We should all try to make each other better, not worse. And that's what's bothering me is people are sharing on the worst behaviors. They're rewarding it. They're rewarding it. They're watching it. They're giving money to it. They're giving praise to it. They're attacking people for it. It's like that's not making anybody better. Thank you, Viper. This was a good call tonight. I really appreciate you calling in.
Me too. Have a great evening.
You too. Bye now. Thank you, Dan. I can throw the link in one more time. I'll take a quick call if anyone wants to call quickly. Viper was good. Maybe that is the last one we should leave on. I had another thought in my head and I just lost it. When I was saying goodbye to Viper, I liked her. She was good. Oh, thank you. It was fun to do the Howie Carr show. Love Howie. Yeah, maybe Valerie said so will call in. I saw her in the chat. Call in Valerie. I'd love to have Valerie on the show. That'd be a good last call. Thank you, Borders Girl. Thank you, L. Forty four 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 KR. Oh, I know what I wanted to say. Karen Reed. I don't talk to her a lot. Mostly it just messages every once in a while. And it's never asking her or even sharing the stuff Aiden's saying. But you know what I get from her? Is the pain. And the PTSD. And I could feel it. I could I could. I I treat her kid gloves. Because that's the reality. I could feel it. And she protects herself. She's not watching all this stuff. Because she has to. It's real for her. This is real. This is an entertainment. She is the star of her movie. Her and Alan Jackson. And her attorneys. Anyone else is a secondary player. This. Not only can I imagine it, the trauma that Karen has, which is unreparable. I can feel it. I can feel it when I even through messages when we talk. I mean, we're not even talking about any of the details of anything. We're talking about like music and shit. I could feel it in her. And I wish Auntie Dub and Nurse Kim would just especially Nurse Kim. Doesn't have to be like this, Kim. You better. I believe she's better than I I think. I think the environment sometimes. All right, we got Amy. I want to bring up Amy. Amy, how you doing tonight?
I am good, lovey. How are you?
I love that it's all women who call in. I love uh that's the other beautiful thing about the spaces the other night, listening to Meredith's space. It was all women. Except for my dude Jimmy T from Lynn, who was the perfect dude to call in. Street guy, very gentleman. Made some great points, didn't didn't hog the mic. It was perfect. Amy, I'm glad you called in. What do you think tonight? What do you want to say?
I I think that me more people need to realize that if we lead with our hearts and with kindness and love, that more of the stuff just won't be an issue. Treat people the way you want to be treated. You know? And and this stuff just won't matter. Time is so fleeting, blink and it's gone. Like two days ago, I was in my twenties. I'm fifty three. Time is gone. Do you know what I'm saying? Time goes so, time goes so fast.
It does go very quickly.
So why are we letting this? This is high school shit. This is high school shit. Let it go. Who cares? Who cares? I understand we need to vent. I get that. People need to come on here and talk about their stuff. Fine. Talk about it. Get it over with, get it out of your system and let's move on. Really, at the end of the day. It's it's turtle freak that has to deal with his own drama. He's going to continue to do it because that's how he creates his content. He cannot. He's not going to change. You cannot make people change. They have to want to do it inside themselves. So until he decides he wants to change.
I wish he would because
But guess what?
You know, there's a part of me that has still sympathy for him because I know what he's facing. I know what he's facing and that's going to make somebody crazy.
I knew Aiden from way back in the day.
He has to step up. It's like he doing more five hour streams on people you don't like. That's not doing anything. And if you can't.
For you or I or anyone else.
Well, no, I I'm gonna give the advice. I'm gonna, but I don't care what he says.
You can give advice till you're blue.
Let me let me finish. I'd like to finish my thought before you.
Go for it, buddy.
Yeah, thank you. Because the thing with Aiden. I do feel for him because of the charges, but at the same time. If he continues to do these five hour streams and attacking people and having his little henchmen do it. It's going to continue to get worse for him. And everything I said and I challenge anybody, anybody, Amy, I'm gonna ask you. What I said to him on his show was, did it turn out right? Is his life been has his life been great since I said that on his show or has it been pretty shitty?
Do you know something? That's how the universe works. You make a mistake. And a little rock falls on you. You go, what the hell is that rock, right? And then you don't learn from the rock. So you make a mistake again, then the rock is a brick. Oh shit, what the hell is that brick? You make another mistake and then it's it's, you know, a two by four. What the hell is that two by four? You make that mistake again. You're not learning. Things are falling on you. You're not learning. Next time it's, oh, what the hell is this? It's half a house. You're gonna keep making that mistake until you learn, shit, maybe I should stop making that mistake. He's gonna have to keep learning on his own until he realizes maybe I should stop doing this shit.
That's it right there.
It doesn't matter who tells him, you know?
But we can point it out. I mean, I think that's healthy. The the ones that are bugging me is they're cheering it on. They're watching to make the mistakes and they're cheering it on.
And the people that are cheering it on are just as mentally unstable sadly as he is. And they probably need just as much help and assistance as he does. And none of us can do. You can lead a horse to water, Mike, but you cannot make that that son of a bitch drink. You just can't. You can have the best intentions in the world. But you just can't.
Billy on that. I do. But at the same time, I think that there's an audience out there. And they need to wake up. And I think some of them are starting to wake up a little bit. I do.
I hope so. I hope so. Um, by the way, I just want you to be aware, the next time we all get together. Me, you, JFK, the whole crew, I have now a brand new pair of sweatpants that need to be signed. My coat is full.
Well, you're the one I sign the code of.
You bet, buddy. I got, yeah, I got sweatpants now. They need to be signed. Coat is full.
So people are giving me a hard time because I was short with you. I cut you off there. You're all right with that, right?
No, please. Are you kidding me? Come on.
I'm a little fired up. Because my problem is if I don't say what I'm thinking at the moment, I'll forget it.
Mike, you are totally fine in my book, pal. Don't even sweat it. It's me. It's Amy Law. You've been on my page. You've been on my channel. You know all about my kindness to. Nobody gets me upset. Don't worry about it.
You have a show too, don't you?
Yeah. Morning message with Amy Law. You come over to my page anytime. It's all kindness and love. That's all it is.
I love it. I didn't you never caught caught anyone off come calling in?
Um, no, and and I we don't kick people out either. I have I have several mods on my page. I don't kick people out. They get warned three times and if they can't uh connect themselves with kindness and love, they get timed out for twenty four hours and they're welcome back.
I love the twenty four hour timeout. Those are my favorites.
Hour timeout because everybody deserves another chance. Um, we don't kick anybody out. And my channel is always free. It's it's not for pay. I do this because I love it and I love putting kindness and good out into the world. Um, and that's that. And I pull oracle cards and and you know, try to do good and make people feel good. I just, you know, I'm not a big channel little. I'm tiny. Like I don't even I don't even think I have two hundred people and I don't really care. Like I'm those people that come, I'm happy. I like my little intimate chats. It's fun. I love it.
Exactly. It's great. I'm glad you called in, Amy. Is this your first time calling to my show?
Um, I think so, maybe, but it's not my first time chatting with you, certainly.
Yes. No, no, we've chatted, but on the show, I think that, yeah, this is good then. I'm glad you called in. I really appreciate you. Uh, people want to know what your page is. Can they look you up? It's what's on your screen handle here, right?
Amy Law nineteen seventy two. It's my YouTube name right there. Look it up. That's me.
Promoting it.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Amy La or Amy LA nineteen seventy two.
It's Amy Law. My nickname is La La. Yeah.
Yeah.
And uh Tom CPU, Tom and I, we've been friends for over thirty five years. Tommy knows me. We've been friends forever. Tommy is like Tommy is one of the best guys ever.
Wow, thirty something years. That's that's something.
Tom and I have known each other since way back in the day when it was the AOL chat room, the master room.
Oh, my God.
Before there were receipts, before there were cell phones, when there were only like, you know, beepers. The palace, you know what I'm talking about, way back in the day.
I know the palace. Oh, yeah. Sagas. I I went there when it was the rock pile.
Yeah, I'm sure you did. So did I.
Where I hung over Robbie Roadsteamer.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. But Tommy knows. Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. But Tommy knows to keep his mouth quiet. Cause he knows, he, he knows Amy from back in my twenties. So Tommy, he doesn't say anything.
He's saying, he won't mess with you.
No, 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 but no, but I would never mess with him. I love, I, and I have respect for him. I love Tom. Tom's a good egg.
Love it.
Yeah, he's good people.
Alright. Well, I appreciate you calling, Amy. I really, uh, thank you for calling.
Mike, you're a good egg.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, don't forget now, the next time around, I got, I got those, those uh, markers that smell good for the sweatpants. Okay? Just keep it in mind.
I'll be signing them.
I know you will. I love you, buddy.
Thank you. Uh, you just got a subscription from Detective Mullins. So thank you so much. We have one more caller I'm going to take.
We love Mullins.
Thank you so much, Amy. Have a great night.
Sweats for Mullins too. Alright. Bye bye.
Let's bring up, uh. I keep saying I'm going to go, but we got more calls. Denise, what do you, what do you want to say tonight, Denise?
Michael. Listen, how are you?
I'm doing good.
You know, you are doing good and that's what I called to tell you. You're doing wonderful. You know, I was talking to uh, Howie Saturday. And I said, you did a great thing by bringing Mike on, Mike Crawford. And he said, I know I did. He said, talk to this lady over here. And she kept shaking her head and shaking her head. And saying, we know, we know. And I said, I hope you're going to keep him. And he said, he's not going anywhere. So you need to keep that persona and you need to get off of their ride. It's their ride. And that's it. It's not your ride anymore. You, you said what you had to say tonight. And I know you're hurt. You're hurt because of your friends. They're, they were your friends. But sometimes you have to learn to let go. And probably, yeah, and you know what?
These are my, this isn't my rodeo anymore. It's not my monkey. They're not my monkeys. It's not, it's not, I'm, I'm not the one that's going to be uh, brought into court over this possibly, like, you know. Uh, that's what I'd say to some of these YouTubers who are participating.
I know you were afraid of that two years ago. I know.
Yeah.
I know.
Like, do, do they really want to get called in as a witness? You know, when I said setting up, I just didn't mean, you know. I talked about setting up, you know, whether a witness or you get charges, one or the other. Do you really want to be in that position? You know, that's what some of these people have to think about.
Well, they're not thinking of the long term. They're not. So, but you need to, you set yourself up in a good spot, Mike, and you're going to keep yourself there. Don't ruin it for yourself. You're happy.
See, I don't even think like that. It, it's funny. I, I gotta say. The way my life has gone over the last like twenty-five years. I don't need to think like that.
What do you mean? You don't need to think like that?
I don't. I just, I know that if I just do.
You do you. You're doing well.
That's what I'm saying. If I just, I know that if I just do. What I'm here for, which is like the show and booking the guests.
And you know what?
I don't need, I don't need any strategy. Do you know what I'm saying? There's no plotting. There's no, like, that's the thing. People are like, oh, you're, I don't think like that.
I mean, you would.
I know I'm fine either way.
I know, and you are.
God, God's got me. As long as I'm doing the right thing, God's got me. That's what I realized somewhere along the line.
And he does. And you know what? Keep above the thirty-nine thousand feet. We all do it every night. And you know what? We're happy. We are all happy over there. There's maybe five hundred of us. But you know what? The numbers don't matter. It's not the quantity. It's the quality of the people that you're with. So I'm just going to tell you. You need to stay. In your lane. Stay where you are because you're doing so good. Don't ruin it. I mean, we love to hear you one, Howie Carr. We love it. And he said, we're not getting rid of him. He's our villain. Don't, don't, you know, don't step out of that lane. Stay there.
No, I, it's, I want to, I really appreciate that you uh, said that to Howie.
I did, I did. We talked for about fifteen minutes, ten fifteen minutes. And I'm telling you, the smile on his face when I said, Mike Crawford, he was just like. He smiled and I was like, oh, and then he said, tell her, tell her. And I said, he has wonderful guests on your show and blah, blah. He said, and she said, that's what we love about him. He's, he's got a whole different. View on, not, not the view. You have a lot of different viewers. You know what I mean? You have different guests than what they would have. You bring something new to their table.
I, I think so. And, and uh.
And they know so. They know it.
They know it. Yeah, I know what, they know it. And uh, I, you know, Howie and I are like two peas in a pod. It's funny because people always comment on the, how the political differences, which are obvious. I don't agree with him a lot of the national stuff, but that's not what I'm on there for. I don't talk about that stuff. I'm not trying to jar the listeners and, you know, go against Howie on his politics. It's uh. Just bring it on the guest and expose the corruption. And that's what I love Howie for. That's why I've always listened to Howie. Because he exposes corruption.
Yeah. And that's what this is supposed to be. I mean, YouTubers are getting like MSN. I mean, MS, uh, MS, mainstream media, M, MSM. And it's crazy. It's like, I don't listen to mainstream media because it's a bunch of bullshit. You know what? YouTube's getting worse. And that's not why I got on YouTube. I got on it to listen to the real shit.
True.
You know, I, I don't want to hear this bullshit. Um, it's worse than mainstream media. It's, it's tit for tat over here. We don't need to hear that. That's not why we're here.
Not why I'm here either. That's why I don't even, it's funny. Cause. I did listen to a few minutes of Machado today because people were like, you have to listen to this. But um, mostly I don't listen to any of it. I stopped listening to it because, and it's been months. I haven't listened to Aiden in months.
You know what?
The only thing I get, the only thing I get is those little clips when people clip it. And the reason why is I, I don't want to be responding. I'm just not going to, like, that's why. I just don't respond. It's, it's like so below me to respond to that shit.
Yeah, I'll listen to Jess in the morning. I, I did this morning for a few minutes and I said, oh, it's a bunch of bullshit. And then this, then. Again, it's a bunch of bullshit. And then again. And then I switched over to Aiden to see what he had to say. And he said, I'm not talking about it anymore. And I'm like, well, here's a start. There's a start, but.
Lee tonight though, what's he going to do tonight?
I don't know. And you know, rightfully, I don't care because I'm going thirty-nine thousand feet and flying with my friends.
Are they going on tonight? That's where I'll be. If they're, if they're flying tonight, I'm flying with them. Like, that's it. That's what I do. I find YouTubers that I like, that I respect. I'll, I'll watch Calling All Beings. I'll watch Canton Chronicle. I'll watch JFK, obviously, but that, you know, I don't go to these other hate channels. I just, I don't listen to it anymore. I don't. That's what I consider that as.
Baby steps with what, 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 what they're doing right now. They started with baby steps. And let me tell you, they have come such a long way with this case. Mike, you should pull it out. You really should. And I want to, I'm going to call Howie about it.
Well, what, oh, about uh, the uh, Eddie O'Brien?
Yeah, I'm going to call Howie about it. Yep.
Yeah, you should.
I mentioned, I uh, messaged you on it, but I don't think you saw it yet. But anyways. Yeah, you know what? It's, like I said, Mike, it's quality over quantity. And if you're going to fly with JFK or um. Canton Chronicle, he had a good show last night.
Oh yeah.
He comes in with, with good, some good material.
He does.
You know, um, Calling All Beings, um, they have good talks. I mean.
They do. They got good guests. Boston Bia, uh, she was in the chat tonight. I love her. I like her and DJ. They're nice people.
And they're talking about things that. You know, we're trying to help with, that everybody is like interested in, in trying to fight and, you know, but not trying to fight each other. It's not about that. We're not fighting with each other. I mean. You know, uh, Mike, I've never seen you this upset, honestly. In the past, these past two months have been awful for you.
Not been good. But I mean.
Yeah, James.
It is what it is. You know what I'm saying?
Great guy. All these people, they're great people. They don't, they don't shit on anybody or everybody. They don't. And I mean, I made a comment on. Twitter a couple of weeks ago when I said, uh, it was about JFK, you know, just promoting his. Channel and somebody commented and said, what does he bring? Just a bunch of gibberish or whatever they said. And I'm like, you know what? If you actually sat there and listened to him, he makes more sense than any one of you fucking YouTubers. And it's the truth.
You talking about JFK?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, no, he's, he's solid.
He is solid.
I knew he was solid from the beginning. You know, it's the first time I met him. I think that's why we connected. He was an anti-wee guy. I'm the wee guy. And he's like, but we were both like, we do shit. We, we're like activists basically. Like he, even in his movies, like I found out, like, you know, some of the movies.
JFK stands for, right, Mike?
Justice for kids.
Exactly. So how long has he been doing this? I mean, as long as you guys, right?
We're, we're the same. We're, we've been two peas in a pod too. Like, it's funny because we didn't even know each other that well. But I would see him around. Like, there's one day I was walking on the cell, I'm calling one of the big dog and he's there filming a video, him and his guy, just one guy. It's like JFK. And it's like, I knew he rec, like, he's like. It's so funny. Like, real recognizes real, real quick.
I know. And then, and it's sad. I could never see you and Ja, I mean, you came full circle, right? And everybody else is pulling apart from each other. And that's going to happen with that little clique that's stuck there too right now. They're just stuck in a bubble right now with this whole bunch of bullshit. Crap. It's just, they're stuck in that bubble. How are they going to get out of it? They have to stop it. I mean, Aiden has. And he says he doesn't, but I'm sure he does. And you know, Aiden has done a lot and I will, he has done a lot. But he's got Jess, he's got Nurse Kim, he's got a fucking Ray from Dallas. And I know that they're all listening now. I mean. He's on his YouTube, listening to everything that's going on here. And I really don't give a flying fuck what he does because he's a kiss ass. For Aiden. And if Aiden put him up to it, shame on him. Shame on him.
It's like, they're always bashing on women too. It's like, dude, it's so cringe. It's so cringe. He's going to take a, a woman for a walk. Like, that is so cringe.
What they did to Valerie in public was disgusting. What they are doing to Meredith in public is disgusting worldwide. It's fucking disgusting. They ought to be ashamed of themselves. And honest to God, I don't know. I don't know how they sleep at night. I really don't. And they can do it.
Showing his face. Yeah, never showing his face. I mean, what kind of, that, that's a fucking real coward shit to go after women. You're, you're a dude going after women. And you don't show your face. How much of a coward are you, Ray?
He doesn't want anybody to know who he is. And I'll tell you something. He can pick on anybody about how they look and blah, 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 and this and that and the other thing and how they talk. Listen to him. Look at him. You can't see him. You can't understand him. Who the hell is using some kind of a, I don't know, voice changer, whatever he's doing on, he's got to be, that can't be real. But, I mean. You can't see his face. Why would he pick on people? On their looks? Why? And Valerie, I love her. She's, she's a strong woman too. I mean, she doesn't take any shit either. But you shouldn't either. And nobody should. I shouldn't, you shouldn't, nobody should. And you know what? I'm going to say it again. JFK didn't. He went off for two weeks. He went to calm down. He came back and started on Eddie O'Brien and, and uh, Jigga. So. That's what people have to do. Just stop it. Just stop it.
Appreciate you calling. Thank you so much, Denise. And thank you for saying good things about me with Howie and.
I would, I couldn't see Howie not say anything to you. And my husband was like. Denise, you're going to go see Howie today? I said, of course I am. He's down the street. I guess I am. And then I said, uh, you know what? I, I totally forgot about him being there, Mike. So I went to my granddaughter's soccer game. And I came home and I said, oh shit, I gotta go to the grocery store. So I went to the supermarket and I saw the sign that said, Howie Carr. I'm like, oh, good thing I came. I, I literally forgot about it. I had ten minutes to go there. But he stayed a little overtime. I was there. I, I, I think I was holding him up.
And you know what? I gotta tell you too. I got, I got a call the next morning.
You did?
Oh yeah. They were like, Mike, we, we've, we've been doing um. Book signings all weekend and, and there was only one name that kept coming up. It was Mike Crawford.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sure.
Thank you, Denise. I got a call about it from them on, on uh, the next morning.
I think I was the last one in there. I, I like literally ran in. I, but he had the parking lot packed.
Yeah, I heard. Yeah, everyone was amazing apparently. They, they really packed it out and it was a great turnout. So thank you for showing up, Denise.
Yeah, of course. I wouldn't have missed it if I, if I couldn't, if I couldn't have missed it, I wouldn't have. But ironically, I, I had to go grocery shopping and I forgot. And I went and there he was. So it worked out good. And my husband was proud.
Definitely.
He's like, thank you, thank you. He wanted the, he wanted the one book and I wanted the other one. He wanted the first one. I wanted the second one.
Totally.
Yeah. So anyways, it was great talking to you, Mike. I'm going to get going. I got to go check on uh, see if our flight's leaving.
Night. Thank you for calling, Denise.
Alright, take care, Mike.
Thanks for watching. We'll see you over at JFK tonight.
You got it. You betcha.
I'll see you on the flight. You think I should have a weekly call in show? Uh, Nan? We got to get Nan back on the show. Nan, you can, uh, well. I don't, I actually, maybe we won't have you call in because you would be, I'd want you here for like another hour. I love having Nan on the show. I'd rather have just a separate show with you. But they, we have had some great callers tonight. It's funny because a lot of the callers, you can tell they want me to stop. And mostly I don't bring this on the show. I mean, there have been, I did that eight minute video. Which was very controversial. But it got a lot of support, eleven hundred likes. Uh, and I also streamed Meredith's spaces. But I mostly haven't done shows. I really haven't spoken on it like I did tonight in a calm, rational way and just, you know, kind of touch on it. Um, but there are some, you know, some of the callers think I should move on and I should focus on what, what I usually do here, which was interviews and guests and different topics, which I'm definitely doing. I've got some great things lined up coming up. But I just didn't want to book anything too soon. Because I know what's going on right now. But there's also the other side of it where Jay says, I respectfully disagree. Aiden needs to be called out for his dispo, uh, he says disposable. I think he means despicable behavior. Like there's the other side of it. You know, and I think there's a in-between here. Where my, like, I know my life. I am not going to be a crusty KP. I'm not going to be on Aiden. That's my mission in life to bring down Aiden Carney. That's not who I am. That's not what I care. Like, I'm, I'm not here for that. But I'm also not going to ignore and be a coward. You know? So I think both sides have a point. I, I think bottom line is I'm not going to make this my entire life and be consumed by it. And X and Twitter is a lot of the battleground right now. And for, you know, for it to go on there is, I, I feel like it's more. It's smarter to do it out there than on the shows. But if I'm going to let people call in and talk about it every once in a while, that's fine as well. It's just not that I'm, I'm not doing five hour streams every night. On what Aiden and the Glara and just Machado. I don't, I can't. And I don't want to watch it. I don't watch it. So. And this is not my circus. But at times. Like tonight. I'm going to let Meredith speak. And especially when they've called her crazy. And she's posted all the receipts. So that's where I am. I'd say I'm more in the middle of it. And yeah, we all want them to do better. I do. I'd love to see it. I'd love to see him take some accountability and move on from this. And Meredith has every right to respond. That's the big thing. Anyone call her crazy or tell her to stop, get off. She's been malign. She has every right to respond. They went after her job. They went after her kids. They call her crazy. She has every right to respond. And anyone saying that she shouldn't respond should ask themselves, what would you do if it happened to you? Now, a lot of you get so upset if I say one, there was one person today, I said, this is so stupid or you're being so stupid. They got so upset. They got so mad. You're punching down. You're so mean, Mike. What happened to you? But imagine, just imagine if they got. What Meredith did. Five hours every night. Multiple YouTubers coming after you. You guys can't take one comment on Twitter. That means nothing. That may, might have got two likes. You can't handle that. Can you imagine what you would? Can you imagine what you would get 10,000 people attacking you? Be a different story then wouldn't it? Uh I keep saying we're gonna wrap it up but I got another call I wanna take. Uh Josie Lou you get you will have to unmute there you go.
Hey.
Josie how you doing?
Good how are you money making Mike?
We're doing good I'm feeling better uh what what are your final thoughts I guess you're gonna wrap it and close up the show tonight.
Well you know um I guess in in many ways we all hit crossroads right like and I don't wanna come up with another analogy but it's it I think the hardest part is when you have a certain level of attachment to different people and you realize that some of those people are hating on the same people that you grow to like right you actually some of some of these people we grow to love them to appreciate them and admire them in many ways because of what they did what they brought to the table what they contributed in their own little ways right cuz everybody has their own level of you know ability to do whatever it is that they do for whatever it is that we're fighting for. I find myself in this dichotomy where you know there's different reasons why I like different people and when I see or hear all of those people coming against or at the same people it's just disheartening like I'm tuning out I I go into different shows and I have an especial attachment and bond to certain people and when they come at somebody else that I also like I have to tune it out it's almost like I I have to become deaf and blind and try not to hear the wrong things they say about X or Y just because they don't know that it hurts me it hurts me I don't wanna hurt them because everybody has a right to their opinion everybody has a right to care or not about somebody else. But it's like in the case of JFK and James Jackson and Kevin Kev the only thing those kids did was open the doors to others to come and speak their piece. And they ask questions they always ask questions because they wanna get to the bottom of it. And JFK at one point said he wanted to know the truth he wants to know who is who and he's on he's got every right to do that we all have every right to know who is who. But it is it is heartbreaking it's heartbreaking it's disappointing it's disheartening when you find that the people that you have grown to admire love or follow or or respect sort of like crush you in the heart and twist the knife while they're at it so let's rise above it right like nothing lasts forever and I the first time that I experienced something like this was back in the day when when Sean came up with the uh Proctor being fired and all of the sudden that would that raised some sort of hate and animosity and jealousy because he was the one who said it first. There's a lot of people that believe on receipts there's a lot of people that believe that time is the best receipt provider because time is what either validate us right validates what we're doing receipts do too but you need to give people the benefit of the doubt we all need to give each other the benefit of the doubt we all deserve the benefit of the doubt. I'm hurting for Aiden I think that he's gonna be in trouble I was a freaking you know diehard total writer for almost two and a half years and you know at one point he even put a comment it was like good I didn't like you anyway so it's like oh great haha what do you do so I laughed at it but you know the glare the glare and Sean were like so good together and at some points people had to pick a a team why? Why do you have to pick a team pick the truth like you know that's what you need to pick? Pick the side of the truth whoever is on the side of the truth and is actually I don't know I I don't even know how to explain it it's just it's heartbreaking.
What do you say to this comment from LaFario cuz this keeps coming up? She says I'm tired of people saying that anyone who speaks up against this is continuing the drama and needs to move on. Cuz it keeps coming up what do you what do you think about that?
Well but it's it's that's also uh you know it's a cash 22 because how do you expect people to react when they're hurt do you want them to be silenced? Do you wanna censor them okay so let's not speak about the drama let's move on but the drama also is tied to wrongdoings that happened. You can't not just forget about the wrongdoing or leave the drama aside. How can we talk about a unauthorized illegal recording of Karen Reed without leaving the drama aside? How can we do that so we don't mention how it happened? We don't say who did what?
Yeah we can't defend Karen Reed.
Exactly so at the end of the day.
We have to abandon Karen Reed because it might be drama.
And it's not so much about Karen Reed and I think I put that you know my loyalty is with Karen and everything that she has endured through since the whole thing started. I mean that took a Herculean effort from that kid to maintain herself resilient and focused and forget about everything else that she had you know dealt with and plus all the stuff she had in front of her and the lack of evidence and everybody trying to hide stuff inverting videos not being able to call out or or have the discoveries that they actually demanded and that the case demanded. Forget about everything she had to go through if we think about the situations instead of the people maybe we can find a common ground to move forward but still that doesn't that doesn't say that we don't worry or hurt because somebody may be facing jail time. That doesn't mean that we're not concerned that oh my god but then again these are the choices of people. If you continue to make the bad choices it's not just a mistake you're continuing to do this repetitively so it's like at some point we need to own our own mistakes we have to because if we don't who's gonna own them somebody else we can't expect anybody else to own our mistakes. Therefore us to actually own they're ours and at some point we need to say enough. And I'm not gonna do this anymore I'm gonna stop ranting about this I'm gonna stop you know recording people or I'm gonna stop how can you how can you pretend to be the savior right the PR sir savior of an injustice and then turn around and and this comes up? Again I had already stopped being a total writer I never stopped caring for Aiden. I never did until recently because it's like how many times do I need to be backstabbed you know this is not a freaking baseball game.
I mean that's kinda what that's the where I'm at at this point like I did care. Now now I'm at the point where it's not hate it's not even anger it's just I don't care anymore. That's kinda what it is and all I care about is the victim yeah is the victims of it like that and that's one of the reasons why I haven't really minded that they all attacked me. Cuz that that's one last day they're attacking uh a handful of other people.
And I'm gonna give you an example that I I know that you're gonna remember because it's an example that you and I lived and I don't know if you remember back when I was helping Enrique and and I was going back and forth between Spanish English and whatever and I made a comment and the translation sort of like got all messed up and it was a friend of mine through Twitter who said Josie I think you owe Mike an apology. And I said you know what I'm gonna do it because at the end of the day if if it just takes an apology if it just takes an apology Mike why would I hold a potential friendship a potential you know let's make up and move forward you were helping right I was helping I was trying to help. So why would I hold an apology a sincere heartfelt apology from moving forward why would I why would I do that? Anybody who is mature enough why would you do that? So as far as like different people like I I have had a social hard time dealing with the glare. Because I understand that his loyalty is to Aiden but I was extremely and I I I have never talked to him on the phone I don't think so um other than calling in on his shows. I was never friends with him um like I am with other people but I sort of had a connection with the glare I have a connection with other people. And those other people don't necessarily have a connection and they have a lot of hate to the same people that I have a connection with. So I am tuning out certain people but that doesn't mean I stopped caring for them people. Does I don't I don't know if it makes any sense whatsoever. I mean sometimes it doesn't even make any sense to me.
No it does I mean we we have feelings you know and a lot of times that's what we have to do we have to say you know I still care about that person but I just I can't deal with it anymore I'm not gonna take it and hopefully.
I don't believe in taking sides or being on a team because this is not junior high and this is not middle school right? Like we're not kids anymore this is not about taking sides this is about determining and identifying what the situation was what was the root cause of the problem how did it started do a chronological order of events find out who did what what happened and hold those people accountable but at the end of the day we don't need to hold them accountable you would think that as an audience right as a contributing audience that do cash apps and 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 super chats and whatever and sub up and support you think that we at least have a right to be upset right? But at the end of the day we all need to understand we don't this is their actions. If they want to stand up and and hold themselves accountable in front of everybody to find a way to reinvindicate themselves then you know let's glorify on that if they don't they still have that benefit of the doubt if they don't wanna do it the only thing that that tells us is the caliber of their character right? Their integrity. How straightforward are they with us and if we still want to continue to follow or support that type of individual then sell that V then you do whatever you have to do. But at the end of the day it is our prerogative it is our right just like we had a right to question certain things because we have been following all of these people for god knows how long so I I mean and and in many days through trial in our freaking pajamas. Like religiously forgetting about the news forgetting about anything else stalk to freaking YouTube following everybody to the T and contributing and supporting because we knew that everybody was working towards the same goal. So why cannot why cannot like be that way why can't we go back to that? Why can't we focus on the situation instead of focus on the people? Why can't everybody just you know hold themselves accountable and just call it truths? I I I just I don't know.
Appreciate your call I'm glad you brought up Sean too cuz I'm gonna address something about Sean in a second as soon as I let you go but uh
Keep your head up you know um block out the the noise and everybody else at the end of the day is unfounded when somebody's hating on you is unfounded when somebody's hating on nobody's hating on Masa Masa is hiding I remember the first time that I saw Masa's face and I'm going oh my god he's tall. I could tell just by looking at his face when he first showed up in one of your shows back in the day that was like two and a half years ago or more right so uh what I'm trying to say is let's just block all this nonsense. It doesn't make any sense to continue to foster the hate among everybody at the end of the day you know we're living under the skies these are boomerangs they come back to us one way or another we're gonna have to hey say hello here I am yeah these are all my wrongdoings or these are all my good doings so nobody grates us Mike god grates us so just keep that in mind okay?
I do I think about that a lot.
God grates us so have a great night.
Thank you you too thank you Josie.
You're welcome.
I love your calls I'm so glad you called tonight.
I'll try to call more often bye.
Bye Josie.
Bye.
Bye I like her a lot she's great she is really good um. See this is a problem you can't really have a truce if there's no accountability um. There's a comment said Sean was great he was spot on about Aiden I got very prickly when he attacked Mike though I just wanna say Sean and I are good. I talked to Sean. Sean's a good guy. I went after him too. Sean's a good guy. And it's funny that she brought up Sean tonight cuz a lot of his old hoster I I'm seeing him my feed now and on Twitter and X people are reposting Sean he hasn't posted in months. And people are resharing Sean Sean posts again. Cuz he was spot on about a lot. And he took a lot of shit. And the day that I put out that video the night that I put out that video where the eight minute video from my rooftop deck from my penthouse deck I sent it to Sean I sent the video link and I said crazy Mike. The guy I think he might have got a chuckle out of that cuz remember crazy Sean? He wasn't that crazy after all was he? Yeah JFK did try to call two truce and it went nowhere they kept attacking him. And I'm sure I'll probably get attacked tonight but I don't give a shit. I won't be watching I'll be I'll be on the flight. I'm due I'm actually late for a phone call too I gotta take out Charlie again I gotta finish my chicken pot pie. I do have a call I'm sorry uh I think they might be watching so I think they know. I'm sorry I'm late for my call we've got a a planning call on something else. Yeah manic Monday. Sean warned everybody yeah Sean what Sean was a little geek yeah but I love Sean he's funny as hell too. Maybe Sean will come back on the show someday that would be funny. That would be fun. I appreciate that. Give us McDonough. He had a point on that too hate to tell you he had a point and not that he was so important that they wanted him. His point was you better be careful. You better be careful when you're around this individual cuz shit happens to people around him. That was his point. And his point was he's a friggin retired DEA agent which is different than a lot of us. Alright I'm gonna head out I wanna thank our mods especially tonight and all week. We've got a bunch of new mods here you may have seen that uh there's been some changes over here with mod team. Fortunately that's gotten out too I didn't wanna address it but hey they addressed it whatever I'm not gonna say anything bad about them. They did they did good work here for a long time our mods. It sucks the way it ended unfortunately but uh we've got a great mod team now. And I wanna thank Sarah and Shock and Horror especially. Alright thank you everyone who's been uh calling in tonight. Let's go check out a flight I got a flight to catch. Yeah I don't think Sean's coming back and I would never ask Sean I would never put any pressure on him. I just want you know with Sean the thing I want I wanna be friends with Sean. And that's what I value I value the friendship with Sean more than anything else. Yeah mods rock. And I want Sean to be well that's the thing and I think it was too much you know it was too much for one person especially you know I can relate cuz compared to a lot of the YouTubers I am a little older not that much older but just a little bit. And that's the other thing with this bullshit and someone mentioned that tonight life's too short. And when you get older you only have so much time and energy. And uh yeah I don't think it was great for Sean you know he doesn't need it in his life he doesn't need this shit. You know what he needs to do is go enjoy golf enjoy his retirement catch up with all his friends and family. Right? And that's what I question a lot do I need this anymore? But I think God needs me that's 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 what I'm listening to God right now. And that's why I don't worry about plotting and planning and scheming. God's got me I'm listening to God I'm on God's path God is gonna tell me where I need to be and what I need to be doing. Cuz I only got a short time left and I didn't always listen to God now I do. Alright I'll talk to you all real soon. All right, I'll talk to you all real soon. Love, peace. Thank you so much. Have a great night, everybody.